This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, we're now live on camera and live on recording.
And just as we open up, if you've got a phone with you, just make sure you put that on silent. Please just double check that so we don't have any interruptions. And it looks like we've got a good crowd that's on the web conference. If you are joining via the web meeting today, just do me a favor. I think they're all on mute and just if you wouldn't mind, just try to keep yourself on mute. So we don't have any background noise there as well. And we will try to accommodate the agenda items based on the participation in your point of interest here today. We'll try to do the best we can, but we do have somewhat of a structure. And sometimes we can amend that, other times we kind of have to follow that piece. Hey, can you guys get a little bit of feedback? Just maybe turn the volume down just a little bit. Okay, so we are right at time. We will start with the pledge allegiance, so if you would all stand. And we do have a couple of extra chairs in the back. If there's room, you can just pop those chairs up and put them in room. There's two up front, so if you want to sit, we've got a couple of available chairs. I'll go ahead and take attendance.
I can't hear you, you're muted.
Supervisor Welsh here, supervisor Tinkle, supervisor Banks, supervisor Gephardt is...
I'm here. Thank you.
Yep, so Bob is online and supervisor Guy. So if I can just have a motion to accept their participation, special consideration.
I make a motion?
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. I know we had a little bit of conversation prior to the meeting getting started today. So I know that we've got a good crowd here today, one of the largest crowds we've seen in a while. And we've got good participation online. So we'll try to address your concerns as much as possible, specifically those that are on the agenda. There may be some conversation that we're just going to have to tailor because it may not be, you know, the opportunity for us to go in deep detail. So just bear with us, we'll try to provide you as much information as we can during the meeting today as time permits. And then also if there is areas of opportunity or things that we have in mind, let's say whether it's a town hall or we're planning to have this more in-depth discussion at a future board meeting, just be patient with us. So we'll want to make sure that we hear all your comments, but in the interest of time and how many people we have here, they have to tailor some of your feedback. So we'll start.
Doug, is your microphone muted?
I was speaking with several folks. Yep. I was speaking to several of the folks today before the meeting because I think nine out of 10 of the people here today came to speak about the pool. And I made the comment, I think some of it, a lot of it is just misinformation. There wasn't any move to close the pool. We were actually talking about the cost of refurbishment and it was leaking in the deck and some other things. And what I'd like to do as possible is I have a couple of statements to read and then call up a couple of members of the group to speak. And if everybody's satisfied that the responses to that address their concerns, we'll just leave it with a couple of speakers. And that's really only an interested time. If what is said doesn't answer all your questions, then please let me know and I'll bring you up and you can speak to it. But we did have a statement that was sent in and we all saw about 15 comments that came in through customer care. And we noted all those and copies of those will go to all the board members. And I'll read the one statement. It's a short rebuttal to closing the pool. And again, there wasn't any formal effort on staff or by the board to do that. But here we go again. The annual push to close the commons pool by the Gateway Board of Supervisors has begun only earlier than in the past. What is not mentioned in discussing the reasons for closing the pool is the number of Gateway residents who use the pool on a daily basis. One group of lap swimmers open the pool in the morning. Next come the water aerobic class members who fill the pool several days a week. After these swimmers leave, several regular lap swimmers and walkers take up the lap lanes until afternoon. Next come the social walkers, lappers, and noodlers, plus young children accompanied by their parents or grandparents. After these residents leave for the day, the after-work residents show up along with more lappers. Granted, there are times and days when the pool looks empty, but in season it is used on a regular basis. The main problem with the pool is the lack of maintenance over the years. Since board members who do not use the pool on a regular basis, if at all, they do not want to mention the pool. Maintenance has taken its toll on the facility as we know. If one does not maintain something, it starts to be an expensive problem that could have been avoided had the board done its job by maintaining the pool. Gateway residents are not at fault for the deteriorating condition of the pool. It falls on the back of the board. When we choose to move to Gateway, we were shown the pool by our agent and it was certainly a selling point in our decision to move to Gateway and we have enjoyed the pool for 18 years or more. Due to old arthritis taking over my body, the pool has become a necessity for me. And closing the Gateway pool is the only pool in Gateway open to the residents of Gateway, not just a select few. And that was Martin Conley. And I just wanted to read that statement because I think it sums up a lot of feelings. But I'll call up some folks to make statements and start with Frank Mitchell. That's fine.
Thank you, well, it's a pleasure to be here and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to the subject. I've known H2K for some time and Playtime for the twice as well, so it's... I think part of the problem here that was briefly mentioned is the fact that the law of the social media, we have information...
Whoever is speaking, we can't hear him, I can't hear him.
Sorry, is that better?
That's a lot better.
So often with the social media, we have situations where information is being passed around and in many cases, the information is inaccurate.
Can't hear you again.
Came to the question of the community pool. So my purpose here, a Gateway resident for 16 years, going back to 2005, 2006, when I purchased here without a pool, was the fact that the community pool was a significant asset. Back to what the state person had mentioned before, and it continues to be. And I would think when you look at the value package that's being presented by Gateway, one of the amenities, the community pool, continues to be a feature that will continue to enhance the value of the properties here. So my purpose is two. Number one, to just get clarity on where, I don't necessarily need to know who said what, but certainly I'd like to get clarity on what was said and what was in error, what is correct, and what the people here and the people that are online need to know so we can pass on correct information to the rest of the people in Gateway. So we can swelch whatever bad statements and rumors have been passing around. And then secondly, and as mentioned before, whatever information you can pass on what the plans are for the park, that's being mentioned. Obviously, the pool is being mentioned as part of a park and future planning. So whatever you can share with us at this point that could put our minds at ease would be helpful. Again, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, and I'll just speak just briefly. So the conversation that we've had, not only with the pool, but with parks, with infrastructure, trees, is really, you know, identifying the value of those amenities, utilities and other things and looking at a plan to continue to improve or enhance, to really add to property value and the overall attractiveness of Gateway community. The conversation specifically with the pool has really been around what the residents need, what they want and what they're willing to pay for. Those conversations have been in conjunction with additional conversations around enhancements to the Commons Park area and the need to, which has been almost a 20-year conversation on what to do with that area. I can't recall any specific comment where the recommendation to close the pool has been stated. I think what we have heard and where the conversation has taken us is really understanding how much the pool is used today, what enhancements need to be made to the pool, and is there additional, you know, a pool or structures that would better fit our resident population? So I think we're looking at is the volume today, the condition of the pool, and how we could either increase that volume so more residents can take advantage of our amenities and then how much it may cost overall. So there's a much larger picture and we do have a presentation today, just again, very beginning stages of discovery around what a park plan might look like and how a piece of that, which would be, you know, pool-type facilities could be incorporated.
Yeah, Ed Tinkle here. I want to be as transparent as I can be on this because this is a touchy subject in the community. As best we can tell, and I believe the facts are undisputed, one out of seven residents in Gateway use the pool. One out of seven. That means six out of seven are paying for an asset they don't use. I'm hearing that six out of seven, they don't want to pay for these costs. Let me give you some ideas of what we're talking about so it comes home as to what the dollar value is we're working with. There's two components of this problem. A capital component, in other words, we've got to fix that pool. There are needs at that pool just to bring it to status quo. One of them is the filtration system. It's horrible, it's past its lifetime, so we need to address that. So that's the issue, status quo. The other issue is people in our survey, they wanted things like a resort pool, a walk-in, a splash pool, a kids' pool, a this, that, 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 that. That costs money. And when you've got six out of seven people that are paying for it that don't want to pay for it, that's a problem. That's a problem. So that's the reality. The issue is, is that we're spending, and we've got in the 2022 budget, $291,000 to operate and maintain that pool. For 1,000 families, and assuming it's 1,000 because we have 1,000 basically ticket holders or card holders, that could be 500 families if we have a husband and wife, both of them have a deal. So let's make it easy, 750. You divide 750 into 291,000. How many people here are willing to pay an annual operating cost of $300, $400 to have that pool? Not the capital cost, we finance the capital some way somehow. But just to operate that pool, we'd be looking at between $300 and $400 for all those 750 families to pay for the operation and maintenance of that deal. That keeps the people that don't want the pool, they have a pool or they have access to the pool or they pay for a pool, a club, i.e. the country club or their community association has a pool. They'd be out of that operation and maintenance cost. They would have some skin in the game for capital because the person that buys their house, they may want to use that pool. So the capital is a separate issue. The operating is my problem and the problem of the people I'm hearing from. So that gives you an idea of the order of magnitude. Therefore, we have never been able to sell or even bring to the board and get passed by the board the discussion of a separate rate and charge for an asset. Never, never happened. But I think that's where we're really headed to be able to make this pool thing work and get this cost, especially this operation and maintenance cost of $291,000 deferred. I just wanted to give you the background of what the problem we're facing. You'll come up as soon as they call you, okay?
Yes, good.
Okay, so then I will start, I have two items. So first, in regards to the information, Frank, right? I urge all of you guys in here, please rely on the district for your information. I know we are all excited, Facebook and social media, rely on the district for your information. So if you're not signed up for code RED or if you're not visiting the district official website, I urge you to do so. That's what you're going to get, the information from the district and you're going to bypass all the rumors and everything else is going to save you some headache. So Vicki or Julia, the French, she can help you guys sign up for those items so we can address that. Second, if you guys could, anybody that is here that is opposed to having the pool open, that would like to see the pool closed? Nobody? Okay, so I have not received one email asking for the pool to close. So quite different than Ed, I receive nothing but emails asking for the pool to open. Everybody received the same notice. There is not one person here that wants the pool closed. So I would like for either Ed to forward those emails or whatever information he has to Chris and he can forward it to us because I'm all about the facts. I want to do what's right for the residents. But I don't want to hear say, just as much as I don't want you guys have to hear say from Facebook and from the social media. So fair is fair. There's a lot of money in the costs, I totally agree. The filtration on that system, and Tim can speak to it, it's $40,000. Yes, it is because it's not commercial grade. It's your homemade pool system quality that you change your filters on your regular pool, that's what you got on that pool. And that's why it costs a lot of money to change it. You can get into the detail later on. So what I want is, I really want to hear from the residents, do we want the pool closed or not? And from everybody that's here and from all the emails that I received that all my board supervisors were copying on, it was quite opposite. So I want to be open to the ones that are opposed to having the pool, but I have not received any. So my two messages are, rely on the district for your information, reach out to the district. And if anybody's opposed to it, I am here to listen to you guys and hear that you don't want it. But again, the avenues are customer service or reach out to us in an email and tell us that you don't want it. That's my, that's the only thing I have to say.
Okay, great. So again, there's a lot more conversation that's going to be happening around, you know, total amenities and the potential park build-out. So I know we had the presentation today, which is, I don't know, Chris, if it makes sense to pull that forward?
Well, we could, the presenters are here and I think a lot of the people that are here about the pool.
Let's get the questions done and then go to that because I think that's ridiculous. They have to sit here for an hour and a half, listen to us talk about some other superfluous bull. Let's get to what they want to talk about and let Mr. Prezy make his presentation. But let's first hear all the comments of the audience.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak that their issues weren't addressed or maybe something different? You want to just come up first, you can, and then identify yourself, give your name, where you live, and you have five minutes.
Helen Potner, 10246 Ashbrook Fork in Hampton Park. I've been using the pool in the water aerobic program for quite some time and it's a great asset to us who are participants. You spoke on July 1st that you had only 1,500 replies to your survey. Is that correct?
What was the last?
What was the last count?
That's nothing. You know, it's your one out of seven or whatever you were using as an example, that's just nothing. That's not an opinion from a...
Well, that is considered a viable opinion. You get 20%.
There was mention too of sending the survey again because many people said, I didn't see the survey, I didn't get it. So I hope that you do reconsider and send it a second time. There's so much...
Yeah, just to answer your question, there's multiple rounds of this, you know, conversation around the pools and amenities and all that stuff. And I think it is part of our plan to get more input from the residents. This was just the first go-around, so there'll be additional opportunities for input on that.
Let's ask this because this is a critical deal that we've got in this community. I hear the same thing in Gateway Greens. You're from?
Hampton Park.
Hampton Park. Did your association cam send out the survey? How'd you get the survey?
I thought I got it directly from y'all. No, we sent it out to the...
We sent it out to the cam.
And then we also put it on our social media sites.
Is there anybody here that's in a neighborhood association that their cam didn't do it? Because we need to talk to their cams. Where do you live? Okay, that's what I'm doing this for, to find out where we need to find out who dropped the ball and why they dropped the ball. Back in the back, where are you from? Ma'am, you... The what? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. I'm assuming they got the email addresses of all their owners. If they don't, I don't know what your communication method is unless it's a bird on the...
Well, that's the conversation we had at the President's Council, which represents all the presidents.
What I want to do right now is I want to make sure we get what it is because if the cams aren't paying attention to us, we'll go to the board presidents. And if we have to, I'll call them. They ain't going to want my phone call. And where are you from? The lady sitting next to you? Oh, okay, okay. Is there any other community that did not get a survey? Yes, sir. No, no, homeowners. Renters don't count. Nope.
It's those that pay the assessment.
Yes, the people that, it's the people...
No, no, we send it to the homeowners, homeowners pay the assessment, so therefore their input...
We can make it 7,001 assessments if you're interested. Okay, no, it's homeowners. Yes, sir. Well, Gateway Greens, I can tell you we're running about 20%. So we got 1,400 homes, we got about 200 and some tenants. But I just want to make sure that we get this word out.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, we have a President's Council meeting coming up, we'll address that. If we need to resend it, we'll resend it. Let's get back to comments, we can move things along.
I appreciate that you're going to work hard to send that so everyone receives it and beat up on those cams that are not doing it. The one thing that some of us who are arthritic and have slipped and sliding, we would like to see more protection in the restrooms so that we're not falling on the floor. Yeah, okay, I think that's it. I appreciate you talking to me.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, we have one more comment. Or is that it?
Is there someone else that wanted to speak that didn't get their comments covered?
Chris, all the gentlemen, if you have any by fax or email or anybody who's signing in online wants to speak?
I have asked via chat if anybody wanted to speak. I've gotten some written comments, but not a request to speak.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chairman, I think then after the last speaker, Chris could read the written comments into the...
I have one question.
Name and address.
My name is Bob Raisler in Timber Ridge. And I have a question with regard to the makeup of the board as it pertains to items specific to Gateway. And that has to do with the pool, which is a Gateway asset. Do the board members from Pelican Preserve vote on whether to apply money for that pool?
Yes, because they represent Gateway as a community, not as the neighborhood or HOA that they reside in.
I'd like to make a comment, I think that's wrong.
Get in line, I brought that up 20 years ago.
Well, it's, that's...
I understand that's the way it is. I'm just saying...
Well, under Florida law, every board member has to vote on every matter unless there's a valid legitimate legal basis to abstain, which is only under the conflict of interest issue, under Florida law.
Is there a possibility that Pelican Preserve will open up their pool to Gateway residents?
Yes, if we pay for it.
Well, we can ask the same thing for Gateway Greens and Stony Brook and every other HOA that... So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I will tell you, just, you know, based on my five years, I've never seen, had any representative from Pelican Preserve not be supportive of improvements to the community if that was the majority.
Well, when we came here, when we moved here 17 years ago, 18 years ago, losing track, the pool was an asset that we were shown just as someone else had mentioned. And that was a huge plus for me and a big reason for me to move in here. We have a pool in my backyard, it was there when we moved into our house. And we liked it, but I swim laps and I swim laps a lot, so I enjoy it. Lots of friends there that also swim laps. We enjoy it, we would be devastated if it went away.
Okay.
And I would highly encourage you to, I have one other question. And that is, do you as a board set aside a reserve account for maintaining the pool?
We do not have a capital reserve plan.
You do not? I think that's a mistake also. Where I live, we have roads, we have walls, we have gates, we have different things we put money in reserve on. And that way the thing doesn't go like this, oh, we got to spend $250,000 on a pool. Well, we have to spend $250,000 on a road. Well, heaven forbid, while everybody uses the roads, a lot of people use that pool. That money should have been set aside and this should not be a big kick-off. The other point that I think needs to be mentioned, and that is, when we moved in here, we not only told about the pool, but this huge area all around the pool was going to be a recreation center with all diamonds, tennis courts, lots of good things.
So this is the presentation, I don't mean to cut you off, but that's the presentation that we want to show you guys now.
I just want to make a point. With that money then, no, there was 200, I heard $250,000. Again, a rumor, who knows how much money was set aside, but that money disappeared, it's gone.
Yeah, I'm not aware.
Never spent on anything with regard to a park, the pool or whatever, it just disappeared. And I think we need to start thinking ahead and start planning ahead if we're going to have these things. Yeah, we got to spend a spike, but somebody needs to be thinking ahead because guess what? If we do fix it, it's going to break again, it's going to wear out, it's going to need to be replaced.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Identify yourself, reference your name.
Okay, Mr. Raisler, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Okay, thank, was there one more? Is it...
I am going to say a couple of things that I'm always feeling is the parent in the neighborhood is almighty. I'm on a course, I live in the Reserve. I have been a resident here since the 1990s when the equestrian school was here and they were able to paddle through the top country. That pool and that area, that has been said for 27 years. If that was the plan back then, why was there not money set aside to do that? And why is there not a reserve for that pool? It's been an asset here for years. It doesn't make sense why regular maintenance and money is not set aside for that.
Ma'am, it makes a lot of sense. If you want to be a board and you want re-elected, you keep the dues low. You kick the can down the road and we have kicked it as far as we can kick it.
Well, let's make a statement too, that that was really the mantra of the board up to about five years ago. Exactly, and that's why, that's why a lot of you will be here at future meetings when we look at assessment increases because those are, our first pass on the assessment is pretty high because we've included everything, it's the high watermark. We've included everything that we consider a critical need or needs to be addressed now or in the next couple of years. And those dollars are huge. We budget, we budget year over year and we project what maintenance needs to happen in the pool. But I understand what you guys are saying as far as a reserve. It wasn't done in the past, it's something that we're, it's a practice that we started doing a couple of years ago. And just unfortunately, we don't have $250,000 accrued revenue or a reserve set aside for the pool. But that's why we're having the conversation in a larger scale around total park improvement and enhancement. So we're getting there. It's not something that had previously been done, but over the last probably three to five years is something that, you know, we've tried to put in play.
In the early 2000s, this board retained a firm off the East Coast to come in and do a master plan. It was $7.3 million.
In 2000?
2001, 2002. It died. There was no attempt to put any money in reserve and/or a plan for expansion. In about 2005, 2006, we had the infamous tennis court deal where they wanted to spend $7 million on a massive tennis complex. That died. We have not looked beyond the end of our nose to do anything. We're now doing that, we've got a firm that's come in and done a master plan. What we want to do is to look at the things that you want on that master plan, let you know what they're going to cost and then see how much you really want those things.
That's going to be a cost, not part of the funds that we already paid in Gateway.
Well, this will be extra.
Exactly, it's going to be extra.
Has to be, it's got to come from somewhere.
It's got to come from somewhere, but I agree, that's something that's the idea because you've got tennis courts over here, you've got pickleball courts over here. You're saying what you have and I think most of the residents here might be comfortable with that. I will say, and we talked about social media, but most of these people are here to follow me on social media, putting that out there. And unfortunately, I, you know, I got lots of bad comments. I said, as I said, this is going to be a rumor. But when the people at the pool tell me who are employed there, that it's closed, that's a concern. I don't want to come home and see bulldogs, there's bulldogs in the pool now, like I saw bulldogs in the trees. Now, I probably get 150 emails a day, so maybe I didn't see it about the trees. But I will tell you the new comment that's been brought to your mind... But I will tell you the new comment that's been brought to me by my clients here in Gateway and residents here. Why are they putting asphalt down on the sidewalks? That's like an elastic. That's going to tear up in no time.
It's not. It's just, that's not accurate at all.
Yeah.
I would say before you leave, you've got Tim and you've got Brian Bishiers behind you that that oversee the 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 pool and that that kind of those areas. If you can tell them who at the at the pool, which person of staff told you that the pool would be closing.
To call somebody up. I'm hearing this is a concern.
Well, just so we can make sure that that we have the right information. And we shouldn't have any person of staff saying that we're closing the pool when that is not a direction that this board is making. So we want to make, we want to kill those types of rumors. So if you're hearing it from staff, we need to know exactly who so we can address it in a private.
Social media gives a rumor, and I specifically stated that. I was looking for it. And people come out to stand up to me for it, but they don't usually come. So it may not be accurate, but everybody can speak in and hopefully somebody can clarify for that. Basically, what we wanted to hear.
Okay. Thank you.
I I just have, just to kick back on her. In a way, I am glad that the rumors sealed for two reasons. I want I want this mindset next month. So the mindset of why is it going to cost or why is the increase? So they know that things were not maintained. It doesn't matter. It was five years, ten years or fifteen years ago because I've been sitting in this board not even for a year and knew very shortly and had not that many years ago. So it's not like we, all of us, were paying the money and the money, it disappeared. It's gone. We didn't pay because we, the board wanted assessments to be low. So they they, in their mind, I can't tell you the explanation why, but it was almost like it's going to be a three percent and what can we do with the three percent? And that's not how it should have been. It should have been, what needs to be done? This, this is the cost. This is the cost. This is the cost. Okay, it's an eight percent. That's the cost. That's how it should have been done. And that's what was done now. So the increase that you guys are going to see, and most of you probably already saw, that it's picking up for all those years. So and you guys just didn't pay for it for all those years. You're paying it now. So so in a way, it's not you pay and you didn't receive it and you paid it again. No, you just didn't pay and you didn't receive. Now you're going to pay one lump sum, kind of. It's going to feel that way. And you and then we want you to hold us accountable because now you're going to pay for it and we're going to give it to you. But we couldn't give you something that we didn't have the money for because we didn't collect it from you. So I think that's in a way my frustration. And then that's what made me want to be here because I I couldn't come here and demand them to do things with money that I wasn't paying for, that none of us were paying for it. But now we want your support and we want you to look at those budgets. And yeah, those numbers are are high. But we want you to ask those questions. Why is it going to cost five hundred thousand dollars? I want you to ask why storm drain is going to cost five hundred thousand dollars. You are Dennis Preserve. Brian can tell you why because one repair there is half a million dollars. One repair. One. That's it. So thing, we'll tell you why the things are going to cost money. And 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 I think once you guys take the time to understand all those little things and you add the math, you'd be like, well, I guess there is no cutting if we want the things to get done the right way. So the mindset that you guys have now is the mindset, the open mindset that I want you guys to have on the budget when time comes.
So we're gonna, we're gonna push up.
Doug, if I could throw one minute in here, one comment. Uh, this is Bob Geppert and I'm online. I apologize if I'm not there. Everything that Flavia just said in terms of looking at the big picture and keeping in mind of what you paid for relative to the pool is equally applicable to the ponds and equally applicable to the storm systems and aeration and a number of other features that have heretofore not been addressed but are critical things for the community and need to be addressed. And that's the only comment I want about. Everything is just not the pool. Look at the whole community and the big picture.
Thank you, Bob. Great comments. I wish we recap the comments that came in from the the people that dialed in.
Sure. Well, they worked, the the comments that came in online, nobody asked to speak, but they they were echoed in the room. And it was several people asking about making sure the survey got to their community. One mentioned West Haven. Another person said, other than West Haven, I got it.
West Haven's got a problem. That's my ballpark and they got it.
Yep. But I was more responding to questions that they had. And I'll remind for housekeeping too, if you can't hear yourself through that speaker, it's hard for people at home to hear you. So make sure you're speaking in your microphone. But we have twenty eight people online in addition to the people that are here today.
That's great. Nobody online wants to talk. Nobody wants to talk online.
No, they've just really been asking questions and I chatted and said if they wanted to speak, but I think for the that the questions they wanted to ask or the statements were already made by the previous speakers.
All right, so we're going to pull forward.
Actually, I'd like to address one thing since we have a little bit here. Tim Holland, pool supervisor, and I have been fielding questions all week and trying to suggest that people deal with the facts at the pool. And I wanted to respond to Mr. Tinkle regarding some of the numbers because that's what I've been fielding all week and asking people to maybe go on to the board meeting. First, this seems to be the where all this started. And some of the numbers you mentioned about the the gate cards, we actually have, just so everyone is aware, we have thirteen hundred and fifty nine gate passes that have been issued. Now, of those eleven are for employees and there are one hundred that are duplicates. And that can be from a couple of things. It can be from just duplicates and we don't hand out duplicate cards, but more than likely is from when people have purchased houses and the old ones are never turned in and the new ones are issued to new homeowners. So there's a hundred duplicates. So if we take all that away, that leaves us with one thousand one hundred and forty eight cards.
And and what you're saying is that one thousand one forty eight, the husband and wife combinations have been taken out.
They're they're per household.
Per household.
So one card per household.
So they're unique.
So unique. So so we are back, we're basically back to what I said at the beginning. One out of seven.
Yeah.
So what we have, so the the number that that I looked at and are are true numbers. So we have four thousand seven hundred and ninety homes billable water bills, not including empty land space and fire hydrants and anything like that, right? So when you do the math, we we come out to twenty four percent of active users in the community.
Well, you can't do it that way. We bill based on ERUs and we have seven thousand ERUs.
I also did it by census.
So you got to divide it by seven thousand.
If I do it by census, it actually comes out a little higher. Comes out to twenty six percent. So you can do it either way, but I'm just letting you know the numbers come out to either twenty four or twenty six percent.
And Tim, are you saying too? I just want to make sure we're clear too. So out of that one thousand one hundred and forty eight of unique households, how many of those are active users?
They're all, they're all active users. Some are seasonal and some are summer and some are both.
Okay. And then on an average, what is our, what's our daily and weekly?
So right now, we changed over our card system. And when we did, and the reason I know these are all active is we deleted any inactive card going back beyond two years when we changed our system over four months ago. So anything that wasn't active, we deleted it.
So over the last, you said the last four months?
About four months ago, we changed.
So so the eleven forty eight represents that deactivation.
Right. And everything is truly active. Right. So those are accurate numbers. And as far as the budget goes, I believe you had mentioned earlier two 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 hundred and ninety one, but you in one of your last meetings, I didn't want to watch it. You said two ninety two. So I base my numbers on that. And going on the forty seven and ninety, four thousand seven hundred and ninety homes, billable, I think it was a little bit of a census, but it comes out to per homeowner at the two hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. You're looking at about.
Well, my fear is my numbers were.
Twenty dollars a ninety six monthly, which comes out to about, I'm sorry, yearly, five dollars and eight cents a month per home, not homeowner, per home for for the operation of the pool. So and I'm just bringing this up. So going forward, everyone knows, and you all know, I mean, I'm there and I'm talking to everybody every day. They're all asking me questions. And I want you to know, no one here has heard these numbers. People are asking me. It is not my job to get involved in this. But I brought this in so we can all.
All right, thanks, Tim. So I want to tee up the conversation because we're going to pull item three, three C, well, two, whatever is the the conceptual master plan for the Gateway Commons Park. I want to, let me preface what this is. So what we've done so far is we've had internal conversation on is there a need for a build out of the Commons Park? The consensus from the board is yes, because it drives, you know, when you look at the competitiveness of other communities being developed and being enhanced, in order for us to kind of keep up with the Joneses, we need to continuously be improving our our community. And that's from infrastructure, landscaping and our amenities. And we haven't, excuse me, we haven't sitting on this for over twenty years. So we had those conversations. We pulled in specialists. We sent surveys out. We've had some internal conversations. So this is literally version point five at, you know, very initial stages of what will be a much longer project. So what we're seeing today is by no means a final product. It is not even a final draft. Literally, this is basically drawn in crayon. So this just gives us a conceptual idea based on the survey results that we had and the priorities of what a potential design may look like based on very little amount of information upfront. Where do we go from here? We'll continue to socialize. If there's opportunities to, you know, send an additional survey out that might get us to a little bit more of a finite need, start adding some, maybe some potential dollars in round two. It could be even round three. But there's a lot that's going to go in before we approve anything final, approve any budgeting or additional budgeting on this. So just keep that in mind. This is very, very preliminary conversation. So if there's something on here you don't like, you don't like where the tennis court is, that's fine. If you want to see something else, it's okay. And we want you to, we want your input. The best way to illustrate a park design is to have some type of conceptual drawing. And that's where we're at today. So I just appreciate your patience. Your comments are absolutely welcome in in the in the right venue. So Tim, you want to jump up and get us started?
All right. So that was a really pretty good introduction to that. So Tim Holland, Gateway Pool Supervisor, and we're going to introduce Holm Montez, the company that's drawn all this up for us. And we have two presenters here. We have Rick Brolansky and William Prissy. Who's going to?
I'll start it off.
You're going to start? Okay. And I'll need to do it.
And just as you get started, it's based on what I said. When you guys normally do this, you know, if you can kind of walk everyone through the phases so we can all get comfortable with, okay, yeah, this is not a final plan. Sometimes you might have significant changes from initial design to final design, so.
Chris, do you want to run the show or do you want me to pilot this?
I'd say yes, I'll do it.
Okay, sounds good. So let's go, let's go to the next slide. My name's Rick Brolansky. For the record, Holm Montez is our firm. And I'm an engineer and I'll introduce you a little bit. Bill Pricey is our landscape architect. So let me just go over, you should have received in the docket two packets of information. One is a PowerPoint presentation and we'll go over.
Please speak up. I can't hear you. Can we turn that volume up on that?
Thanks, Bill. We're going to take care of it. Let us know if you, if once we turn the volume up, if you still have problems here.
And you you literally have to hear yourself through that speaker for them to hear you at home.
Will do.
Is that better, Bill?
Radio voice.
All right. For the record again, my name is Rick Brolansky. I'm a civil engineer with Holm Montez. I have with me today Bill Pricey. He's our landscape architect and I'll introduce him in a little bit. But the packet of information has like two groups of information. One is the PowerPoint presentation, the visioning plan. And we'll go through that. That's more of an animation that we'll go through on the PowerPoint. The other item is a spreadsheet. And what I want to do is point out a couple of things on the spreadsheet. What it has are, basically, it's a, an individual items, like a menu of different elements that we could integrate into the park plan. It has in there an estimated cost involved with that element. But it also has in one of the first columns, the popularity among the people who polled and offered their opinions of what they'd like to see at the park. It it shows the popularity of that different element. So with that, I know this is a very interesting process, but we're here today to just go and try to get some consensus of some of the elements that that the board and their citizens would like to have in the park. We'll go back and try to do a spatial plan, laying out those elements to make sure that the elements one works together, flows together, and maybe even introduce your priorities as far as how you would want to implement these improvements over time. And that's, that that'd be the evolution of this, what we're trying to do today. So with that, I'll let Bill go through the presentation in a little bit more detail. Bill Price.
Thank you, Rick. I want to touch on a little bit about what a master plan is. And I think Chairman Banks really teed it up very well. A master plan really has, they have a shelf life. This project actually had a master plan that was done back in nineteen, late eighties, early nineties. There's a master plan on it. But all master plans and even so more so in current times, those master plans have a shorter and shorter shelf life. And I think our pandemic has illustrated to us a lot how quickly things can change and how things change coming out of something like that. So this master plan is designed to really gear you towards the next step this park could take and really give you an idea of what a master plan kind of is. And I'm going to give you a kind of a simplest analogy I can give. A master plan is like a jigsaw puzzle. It gives you what the puzzle's supposed to look like, what that finished puzzle's supposed to look like. And then each of the components are the pieces of that puzzle that you put together individually. And the master plan can be put together in as many chunks as you choose or one piece at a time. But the master plan is geared to give you a vision of how all those pieces will ultimately fit together. That's really the purpose and the function of it. And I hope that kind of simplified it for you. And that's kind of how we're going to run into it here. What here, this, it's like, it obviously represents what's out there and what possibly that park was supposed to be at one time. As you can see, there's a very minute piece of that entire fifteen acres that's being used right now. And it gives you an understanding why probably only one of seven people are using that there. There's not a lot of draw there outside of just the pool. So that kind of, there's a limitation of what that park currently is, but there's certainly a lot of potential what that park could be. There you go to the next slide. And then this is kind of, we're, we're talking at blank slate. Right now, we're really looking at this park as a blank slate. Even though we have a pool there, obviously, people want to have there. They want to have it maintained and they want to have at least a pool function as part of that park at some point in the future. The next slide gives us an indication, this is kind of where we're at with it right now. The the exist, the first part of the master planning process and this stage of the master planning process. And again, I think Chairperson Banks brought this up very well. It's a, this is what we call functional diagramming of the conceptual process. It's really an idea of what the forms and the spaces of each use would take up in the park. And this park has a carrying capacity. And anybody understands that designing parks, you have to build to their carrying capacity because if you, if you put a lot of tennis courts in, those courts take up space. You have to have parking for those spaces. And yet, and so, so, so on and so forth. For every piece you put in there has to have a relative amount of space associated not only with its use, but its parking and everything associated with its operation. Let's slide to the next one. And this just has, this is just the next step. It kind of shows there's an underutilized portion of the pool right there that actually indicates the fenced area. And there's kind of a little bit of a growth, but there's not a lot of use associated with that extra element. This is where we're really trying to conceive the value of what the park can be. And we're looking at where you could have lawn spaces that could really be, they're, they're both used as visual elements. Lawn spaces in parks are a wonderful thing because they're just great open spaces. They're good places to to walk through, to sit against, to people watch. They're the good places to clear your head. Open spaces in parks are a very important element of a functional and a and a good operating park. And when we, we looked at this is, is building that is that you, you, you kind of look at where those open spaces are, how do they best relate to the park? How much open space does this park possibly need? And again, the other parts of it in the, in the brighter green are, we'd say are natural areas. We, and looking through the survey we got, we had a pretty strong indication that people wanted to see some natural areas. And when I say natural areas, they're not ornamental garden landscape areas. These are just natural areas that you could populate with trees and canopy. They give you a sense of space. They define that elemental part of what nature is like without costing you a fortune to operate in terms of ornamental landscaping. We don't see this park being full of that. We see this park being utilized landscaping that's space defining elements to give you pedestrian nature.
And what's it, what's the trail?
If I may, if I may interrupt for one second, are we referencing agenda packet pages so that we can follow online? I guess that's Chris Schubach. Is what he's referencing in our packet that I can follow it?
Bob, we're currently on page thirty four.
That's where I am. Okay. As it, as it flips, if you could just tell me the new page, that'd be great. Thank you.
We'll, we'll do that. So can you just explain what it, what the trailhead is? It looks like it's more path, but it's kind of a substantial area. So I'm just a little curious.
And again, I think as I culminate through this, Chairman Smarts, I will definitely get into what the elements are. And that's a very important question. And again, I think as I culminate through this, um, Chairman Smarts, I will definitely get into what the elements are and that's a very important question. But I'll answer your question specifically. A trailhead would be, that's actually a part of this park that would tie into other potential common space elements throughout the, throughout the community. That's really the function of that element on this, on this concept.
So we're moving to slide thirty-five?
This is tying in of how other pieces come into play with it. And I want to touch on a little bit about the pool because it seems like the pool is a very, uh, a very important element to be, to be considered here. One of the things that we, we'd looked at in terms of how this, this uh, this plan could really, you know, take foot is that leave the existing pool in operation, but build a new pool. While that pool is in use, when that new pool is built, then you can close down the old pool. And it can let Tim and, and there's going to be a lot more discussion as how that may plant, that may fare itself out. Do we ultimately just take the existing pool and repair it? That hasn't been concluded. There hasn't been any conclusions on that being a design element of the park. This is just one way. We looked at conceiving how this master plan could open up and it was looking at creating a new pool area where you can have a pool that's built under current standards, under commercial standards. So it's not costing you normally to operate going down the road. It'll actually save you money long term. When you look at the capital costs of building a new one against the operational costs of trying to keep the existing one in, in the works.
And you feel like in this pool area, even though we don't have any specifics, but you've heard some of the people today, there, it's lap swimmers, it's water aerobics, it's family style, it's, you know, a lot of, lot of different elements. That's what you could, you perceive in a new pool.
Absolutely.
All those elements.
Absolutely. And that's really why, when you really look at this, you, we're really looking at this from like a bubble diagramming standpoint. Again, as professionals, we call this functional diagramming. You know, we designated that that area there would give you plenty of space to create a resort south pool. Well, that is even a resort south pool. But that pool, of course, based on the final programming of that design, would have lap, oh, obviously I've heard that it would have lap elements in it. It may have splash pad elements in it. It may have zero entry elements to it. It may have deep end elements to it. There's a lot of things that'll come into play when you actually get into the design of that particular feature. But at this stage, we're really looking at, that seems to be the best location for it. And that's about the area you would need to allocate for it. So that's really what we're looking at in this context. Other specific things that we, we started to bring in here is that the event space in the, pretty much in the western, near the southwestern corner, that events, that opened event lawn, green space could also be overflow parking, should you have events in your event lawn and where the band shell would be down on the lakeside. And this is considering there would be a band shell element, maybe a lake overlook element. So you could come in and some, have some communities. Then in between the um, the, the open space areas in the front, that's a park pavilion where you could have a nice pavilion where you could come in and you could rent that pavilion out and have birthday parties or whatever, whatever thing you might want to do as a family or as a community, you could have, you could have a facility there to do that and open space on either side uh to provide for it. Another element in there, right, right around the expanded parking is also in this, this concept plan, you're going to see all the parking rules around. Because obviously when you build parks like this and you bring in uh various programming elements, you have to have a place to park. So that's kind of, there's a growth of parking as, as the park evolves also. And there is an element in there of having uh what we'd call a community garden where you could come in and have a plot. And I may live as far away as Bristol Park, you know, down on Griffin or as close as my, I'm going to run across the street, but you could have a plot there that, that you could run out and grow herbs or whatnot, or just being part of the community and growing things in a garden, in a garden context. That's just an idea of a program element.
And we're moving on to slide thirty-six.
This is getting now more into what we conceptually see as what this park can be. And this is largely based on the initial questionnaire we got back and what we saw in there is the things that people commented mostly on. This would have a pickleball element in here and a tennis and some tennis courts. Again, one of the master plans I saw uh most of this park was a tennis court, was a tennis court center. And I don't think there's a strong demand for it. And you know, this again is something as you guys will express back to us as to what you feel are the important things that you would want in this park if it was built out. So what we looked at here is just, you know, a, a couple of tennis courts, a pickleball center that is becoming very, a very popular sporting activity in communities like this. Bocce ball, beach volleyball that would be associated over with the pool facility. And then even a pool pavilion. You have a pool area over there that, or a pavilion that's tied into the natural area, the trailhead, the swimming pool, and it's close to the event lawn.
And is this like to say that you'll get roughly six pickleball courts? Is that equivalent to about two tennis courts?
Essentially, you can get about four pickleball courts per, per tennis court, essentially. You can do that. So basically you have two tennis courts.
So it's just slightly smaller than the tennis court area?
It's actually just slightly, yeah, it's just slightly uh smaller Rick, as you have two tennis courts and six.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was.
And again, we'll get to this. Again, you know, the amount of pickleball and amount of tennis right there is based on what we call the carrying capacity of this concept. There could be more, there could be less. There could be no tennis. Or there could be six. It really depends on what we hear from you, what we hear from the community and what you guys want in this park. But if you have more tennis courts, it takes up more area, it requires more parking and you have to look at all the things that are affected by every element you choose that you want to have in your park.
And just ask you another quick question. And the placement of these, what's the philosophy or the methodology around where these items are placed? Just out of curiosity.
That's a very key question to ask. And again, this was based on largely, if you look at this concept, it has uh a lot of natural areas out along the um, the power line. Because the power line is essentially, it's a, it's a nice sort of look at. But it's functional in terms of what it provides to this park as a, as a connecting element. You could connect bike trails, walk trails. There's a lot of things that you can use that corridor for.
It's supposed to be a linear park is the way it was designed.
And that's kind of the idea of putting the trailhead there is that it actually would play into that being a linear park down the road. But putting a natural area on that edge is also to create a sense of containment and a buffer for the park itself. And the same goes for having the green spaces along uh Gateway Boulevard. There is also, as you're driving up in that Gateway Boulevard, you don't necessarily want to see a parking lot there. You want to drive away and immediately notice and feel that's a park. It feels green, it's got trees in it, you're not looking at parking. And the other idea of this is we want to centralize and internalize the parking to ma- to keep it as small and as compact as possible and to, to give people a central point to go from car to facility. So that's largely what has driven this, this layout. Yes, and Rick just brought a very good point. The bands, uh, the band shell and the overlook at the tip of that area by the lake just lends itself to be there. If you're looking at an event lawn, you have a band shell there, what better backdrop to have than that lake and a natural area? So you're really looking at it from, and that's kind of as engineers and landscape architects, we really look at what's the best relationship in the layout and arrangements of, of pieces in a park to take advantage of the space. And then one other element is, is also in here is if you look right where uh she has that label, we have a food truck area. And that's something if you have uh events, you have a band shell events or you could bring in food trucks. They could come in once a month. You could have it as a planned community event if you'd like, or a one-time event or however you guys choose to do it. Food trucks brought in here and people would have uh play, things to eat in it and entertain themselves while they're doing something in the park. And that's really a programming element that could or could not be part of this. And he really did touch on, and that's another thing is in terms of revenue generators that you have in the park. Food trucks are one, community gardens are one. The pool itself could be a revenue generator. And when I say revenue generator, you have to understand they're, they're not going to pay for the capital costs of this. And I think Mr. Tinkle really touched on it pretty well, that your capital costs are one thing and your operating costs are another. That's a lifelong lifecycle type of thing. And your revenue generators will help you subsidize those maintenance costs, but they're not going to cover your capital costs. Those have to be allocated under a different, different vehicle. So there are things that we considered in here that could be revenue generators, your pavilions, your community gardens, the band shells, the food trucks. There's a number of things in here. And that community building, there's a lot of things in here, like if you wanted to have a birthday party for, for your grandfather, you could rent out space in what could be a future community center. We haven't actually touched to that. If you could go to the next slide.
Okay, we're moving to slide thirty-seven. We're, we're going to take comments out as soon as we're done with the presentation. I see your hand in the back. We'll get the comments after the presentation.
And that's, I'm, I'm sorry, but in this slide, we, we forgot to kind of highlight it, but where the old pool area is, there should be kind of a, there should be a, a colored bubble in right there. That's where we kind of see is where your new community center could be. You could repurpose your pool or the, actually slide to the next one real quick if you would. The next slide.
We're on slide thirty-eight.
And again, and that's kind of where that, where I'm calling that as your flex area. A lot of, you know, your, your community center could now be where your existing pool is, so you have the architecture at your front door. Or do you not see building a conventional uh building as your community center? Maybe it's a, a large pavilion that just has some facilities in it. These are all things that, that haven't been determined in terms of this concept, but they're being planned for in terms of the, of its layout. So we look at that area as a flex area. That uh community center could be up front. It could be anywhere within that space.
These little dotted areas that you have highlighted, are these potential walking paths or?
And this is what this slide indicated. Another thing that was, was clearly pointed out in the survey is people wanted places where they could uh walk around, where they could even maybe exercise. There would be um parkour stations there. There could even be markers that give you an idea of how, you know, how far you've traveled from point A to point B if you, you wanted to do it that way. But those black lines in the, if you walk through there, it gives you an indication of the pedestrian network that this park could have. There's plenty of places you could just mull around out there on a given day and just people watch or walk through and spend your time. So it also has that element where you could just meander through this park as a pedestrian and enjoy the spaces. And this is giving you kind of a finished conceptual touch of, of what this could be from a functional standpoint of all the pieces to it. This is just a good thing to just kind of look at and study. Do you see things in here you like? Do you see things that you may want to have added to it? It's really that stage of, of master planning. We're starting to put, we're really starting to, at this stage, creating the portrait of what the master plan is. Right now, this is giving you an idea of what, where, what those elements are, how big those elements are, how much of those elements are and where they're located. The next step would be is to really start to put hard edges to those, to those elements. Where, you know, where is the pool? Where's the building? Where's the tennis courts? Those type of like. And go to the next one. Again, I'm just roll through these pretty quickly. These are just giving you an idea of what those program elements are. This is giving you an idea of community centers. It could be, you know, it could be a, a building in different architectural styles. Or it could be something as simple as a, a large pavilion that has some uh facilities on the backside of it. That's a determination of, of how this could evolve. Again, this is a band shell item and it could be as small as something that's just a lakeside, basically a big gazebo type thing, or it could be something more on the lower left. It's a little more formal and a little more architectural. Again, this is getting into the idea of green spaces, open spaces. Getting the sense of park where you walk in where it's largely just trees and lawn, walkways and seating areas. It's basically, you're taking a, a, just a sodded field right now and you're creating a park-like element out of it. Getting into what the pavilions could be. They could be as simple as just, you know, four-legged gazebos, or they could get into larger type of structures that might have architectural character to, might have facilities in with them. Maybe it has a bathroom, maybe it has a Brazilian fire pit. Getting into the nature of the walkway paths that, you know, you have just places where you can bike, you can just walk, you can sit, you can go and exercise. This gives you an idea that these are bringing in elements of exercise and community activity that you currently don't have in that park. And now getting into the nature of how that pool could be. It could have splash pads, it could have places for kids to play. It could be definitely by, by what I've heard, it's going to have uh lap lanes in it. But that pool could be a lot of different shapes and sizes. It really depends on what the cost of the installation is going to be and what the uses are that the community wants out of it. Getting into your sport courts, you have tennis, you have pickleball, you have volleyball, you have bocce and you have playgrounds. That's another thing I forgot to mention. We were going through uh the master planning concept is that there would be playground elements in here also for children. Now getting down into the, more of the finished nature of really what a park brings to you. It's that final element of space and which you're leaving to the next generation. And just the concluding piece of uh how we conceptually had seen this based on our interactions with your survey and with staff. This is how we, basically, this is our first iteration of conceptually how this could possibly put, be uh put together.
We definitely appreciate it. Well.
I'll let Rick even, maybe even speak to the budget.
Again, for the record, Rick Brolansky. I know this is a sensitive subject with the pool, but one of the reasons why we chose to show a new pool, I just want to explain that. We're not saying do a new pool. But we thought that there's close to a co- couple of quarter thousand or quarter million dollars that's needed for repairs and whatnot, just to do status quo for the pool. So instead of using that money to invest into status quo, you could use that money to invest in a new pool and gain that, you know, level of service and uh service life for the new pool. So that's why we did it that way. If you want to renovate the pool and keep it where it's at, functionally, that's okay where it's at right now. We could work with that plan.
I literally just wrote down, do you think it's cheaper to build new with all the elements that we need versus repair and build new? Uh, so I'm glad you made that point. It's, that was a question that, that I had. So let's take, if you wouldn't mind, if you have a question, I will need you to come up to the podium and uh just, uh, just state your name and your question. If you want to start here. No, no, personally.
As a resident of Hampton Park, we're already concerned about the linear park because there's no boundary. People are walking down linear park and they're full access to Hampton Park. Would you say that Hampton Park would then become responsible for some sort of a barrier?
I mean, we'd have to talk about that. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, now again, I'd say it would be a point of consideration. Uh, we, and we, it's something that we have talked about in the past. Because it does, I mean, that was supposed to be a linear park, it's supposed to be direct access and it does cut through Hampton Park. Now I haven't heard of any, any issues, but it is something that, you know, we want to keep in mind.
It was born just Hampton Park. It impacts Pinewood Lakes, it impacts Pine Crest, it impacts.
Well, it's on, she's on directly passing through that.
It goes right past those too.
It doesn't go in it though. It goes in.
Well, it goes in between. Yeah, but there's no houses on the west side of Hampton Park. It's only on the east side.
Well, people walk anywhere they want to without any restriction. Uh, so security and, and uh noise for those people on the other side of the lake might be a consideration also.
Sure.
Thank you.
Who else wants to jump up? Go ahead. Just state your name, please.
Uh, again, Frank Mitchell, just two questions. We didn't talk about where the funding's coming from.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's important because we're looking at all the goodies, but we have to know where the money's coming from to pay for it.
Completely understand.
And then, and then when we talk about the tennis and pickleball, would that be competition to the country club?
I mean, if you're, if you live and pay for the country club, it could be.
See, that's a problem.
That's a problem because I think.
It's a problem we have.
Right.
A lot of people.
And I know this is the early stages, but then I'm, I'm a tennis guy, so I've been doing it for fifteen years. Those courts are not filled all the time. So I would really question.
Yeah, and I will say, so there has been some interest with uh, and again, I want to get off stuff here, but there's, there's a couple in, in Gateway that run a tennis academy.
Yes.
They currently participate out of the Fort Myers Racquet Club.
Right.
They've expressed interest in running their academy and doing things out of Gateway, which could be revenue generating for those courts. Now again, that's only two.
Right.
If there was opportunity to generate revenue.
Right.
That would subsidize or pay for two additional tennis courts. Okay, then we, we can have that conversation. But I, I understand there are some amenities that, I mean, pickleball's hot right now. Who's to say in three years if it's, you know, if it's still going to be, what's going to be the next thing?
Right. But it's that business proposition. You don't put another seven eleven in the zip code unless, unless you have more people that are buying seven eleven stuff.
In some of these areas, we would probably want to, you know, build to scale.
Right.
Uh, but also build based on, and that's, to get back to the pool conversation. That's where we've been talking about, what is the volume of use versus the value of uh compared to the investment? Now, I would, instead of having the conversation, well, we only have a thousand people using the pool annually.
Yes.
I'd like to have the conversation, how do we get three, four thousand people using the pool annually?
Right.
Uh, because that adds value. And again, we look at the competition in the communities that are being built in our backyard. If we don't continue to improve our community, if we allow it to age and deteriorate, then your property value is going to lessen. So our, our job is to maintain infrastructure and improve property value in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, there was someone in the, yes, ma'am. And as a realtor, this should be something really positive. Come up to the, just go up to the mic.
We are going to be in competition. Uh, it's Monica Morris. Um, and we are going to be in competition with that golf and country club. The Gotham Country Club offers summer fees, which are not bad. They're $500. They're $500 for May through October 15th. Six hundred this year and 250 for food. So, you know, eight fifty and a lot of the residents that do not have pools in their community will do that. However, can I sell that? Maybe, but I don't think any resident in Gateway wants something like this open to the public for outside people.
Yeah.
From other areas.
That's something we'll talk about as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they want that. If, if there's a fee for this, what I see for need is there's not, the splash pool may be a great aspect. Uh, we took away the swing sets and the stuff for the kids to play on because it was too hot because there's no shading over there. If you have all those green areas, are they going to be used? The walking trails, we had those on Gateway Boulevard. They went, they took, deteriorated and people didn't use them. I'm not sure that's a great idea. You remember they used to be set up with stations all the way down through the sidewalks? I don't know if you guys were here then, but they were there. Um, I, I can see maybe bypass or something, but again, you're talking about Hampton Park and backing up all to these other communities. That affects them. Having something that families, we are getting more young people coming here and buying and families. So do they want a park that they can go to? And, and something that's gated off like this pool is because the other one, you know, hate to bring it up, but they found needles over there. It's not fenced in. The basketball courts they took down, they lowered it so low that people can't go over there and play. We don't have that here in Gateway. So that's a selling point for that pool. But is it cost effective to take that pool out and put this big resort style pool? If you want a resort style pool, the coffin country club has one for you. It's got that bar, the food. I think Gateway needs something more family oriented for these young people. There's a lot of young people with money out there that are professionals and they're buying in here, but they're looking, they want something for their kids to go to that can be safe. So splash pool, um, you know, playgrounds that's in a shaded area or covered area that they can play in. That's a selling point and an asset, and we do compete with these new subdivisions in that way. Cause we offer it all because they can go pay a membership over here if they want to be a part of that. Something like this, can we charge a fee and can I sell it? I say, well, it's $300 a year to belong to this. I could probably sell that, but it's got to be affordable. And plus you've got a lot of retirees here that are on fixed incomes. They don't want to have to pay an absorbent fee to go to a pool.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think the demographics is about 60% families. And the new census hasn't come out yet, but I, I think the last thing I heard is like 60% families, 20% uh, families with children, 20% uh, single family, and then about 20% retiree, I think.
And we have to think that this was designed with the information received from the residents.
Right.
So, so what you're saying was designed.
Based on feedback.
Based on the feedback for the residents. So what we got.
But tennis courts are already there, so we don't want to compete with them.
Why not?
Pickleball's there too.
But I want you to.
And who's going to pay for that?
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind, let's put this in perspective. The members of the country club that would have basically these amenities are what we call the social members. They're paying 300 to 350 a month, every month of the year.
So are we going to be able to cost effectively that?
To pay that for this right here. If you're not willing to pay, this dog isn't going to hunt.
A month?
A month.
But that's not. I don't know that's affordable.
That's not where, that's not even.
It's not even going to fly.
That's not what we're.
Nor can I sell that.
Okay.
I'm used, I'm just doing the math. When you get to the $6 million, you're going to find out it's double.
So we really don't need something like that because it's not.
You're absolutely, listen, we have a great opportunity, we have a roomful of people. Let's not confuse the residents and let's give them the information that we have. If you don't have the information, let's tell them that we don't have that information right now. We don't have numbers to give you or anybody right now.
Yeah, we do.
That's.
He's going to make a presentation of the numbers here in just a minute. We do have the numbers.
But, but not, not, it's not going to cost you $300 a month for residents to do that.
Because I don't think people are going to pay that. I can't sell that.
They're not, absolutely.
It's not what we're.
That's not what it is.
We're getting sidetracked here.
To know that.
I think it's time, let, let, let Bill make his presentation of the costs.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, what I would suggest is to, for the record, for Maryland or anybody who's trying to transcribe it or anything, we can do one speaker at a time and I think that's important. I understand everybody.
Okay.
Has an opportunity to express.
Go ahead, and we're going to slide forty-nine.
Actually, I think it's 50, but all right.
Fifty. And what I would ask you to do is, are you going to have the numbers?
Uh, again, we're going to keep this high level. And I'm going to broad stroke them.
Yeah.
Okay, this basically is, uh, again, what we would call, uh, it's based on the functional diagram, which is the very initial conceptual planning here. And again, nothing about this is, is final. And these numbers are what we would call is based on a order of magnitude. And I want to give you an idea of what an order of magnitude is. These are numbers not completely understanding what the finished elements are. You know, we're not, you know, you're going to see one of the largest line items in here is for the community center at $285 a square foot. And this space, this park, based on the way it's designed, will support a four, up to a 4,000 square foot building, which means you, you'd spend potentially a million dollars on that community center. And that's not saying that you want to spend that much money or even want to have one at all. So these numbers are based on a order of magnitude of what the potentiality of these could be based on a median, um, outlook of what those design elements are. And I hope that makes sense to you guys. We're just trying to ballpark like a tennis court is about 80,000, $80,000 a court. And that's if you're using true court and they're lit and they're fenced and they have a windscreen and so whatnot. But you don't have to build something to that degree. It can be considerably less. So these numbers in here are based on that order of magnitude. So just wanted to really give you guys an idea of that. These numbers could be much higher or they could be much lower depending on what you actually program in as a design element. So going through here is, first we broke this up into your revenue generators. These are, this is one of the largest line items in this budget. It's at almost $2 million. But these are at least elements that could actually generate at least some income to help subsidize their operational car, their costs. The band shell, the community center, the community gardens, the, uh, the event spaces, the pavilions and the food truck area, uh, the food truck court. Those could actually generate some money to help subsidize their operation. And you get into your sport courts. This is where you have your basketball, your beach volleyball, your, um, uh, you know, you, if you're going to have a sport court area, you need to have a restroom facility and a place to get water if you're out over here playing sports versus being a couple hundred yards away from your pool area. So you're going to have to have some facility, uh, to accommodate the people that are using those sport courts. And you get that into your pool area. Again, this is getting into, uh, anticipating you would might, maybe you want to build up to a 3,500 square foot pool. When you get into the Florida statutes about how, uh, commercial pools operate, there's various thrust thresholds that you have, that you have to provide for based on the size of those pools. When you get up much larger than, I think, uh, 3,500 to 5,000 is, uh, group B. You get larger than a 5,000 square foot pool, you have to have a tremendous amount of bathrooms for it. You really get in a lot of additional costs that go beyond the cost of the pool. So at least you look at, you know, what size of pool do you want to have your lap lanes, to have your, your water, your, you know, your splash pool, uh, splash facilities for your kids? Or however you want to design that pool, you have to build it based on what all the, uh, what all, all the elemental costs are going to be for the pool itself. And we were guessing that's a, that's a standard number for a swimming pool, uh, that it roughly would. I'll see the number of that. Around, yeah, it's around $700,000 for that entire facility. And slide to the next one. Depends on the pool. And again, we haven't got to that stage yet. This is just the order of magnitude costing. When you really start getting into what the operational costing here, a lot of people are concerned about what are the dues going to be for something like this? Those all are, have to be taken into consideration in what we design. Correct, correct. You get into, you know, you have paving for everything you build. You have to have a parking lot. You have to, if you have a community center or a bathroom, you have to have water and sewer. So there's a lot of things, a lot of infrastructural costs that come along with this. A lot of things that are underground that you don't necessarily see, your stormwater piping. It's a lot of things that you have to pay for to accommodate your uses. And then there's the passive side of things. Again, this, all this comes down to what you guys want to have in your park? What are all the elements you want to have in your park? And at what point in time you want to in, include those and install those in this park? And if I could just kind of jump through this, we went through, um, landscape irrigation. We went through the pit, you know, all the various activities that we showed you in the, um, in the presentation and even into the soft costs. And that's when you get into your professional fees, your, your attorney's fees and some of the things associated with getting the project permitted and built. So roughly right now, just based on this general concept and initial program, we're looking at an order of magnitude of about five and a half million dollars.
And so what, so let's think about that just a second, just doing some really basic math. If we take, let's round that up to six million, add, uh, 4% over 20 years. Um, that's going to give you divided by 7,000 ERUs. That's about 300,000, 300,000 to 350,000 annually. When you split it up by the seven, 7,000 ERUs, that's roughly about $50 annually for the residents. Let's say you add another 300,000 on top of that for maintenance and operations. So what this could potentially cost is about $100 annually over 20 years, uh, for the community. That's if it, that's if we, if we, um, got a 20-year loan for this for around six million and depending on what the interest would be. So it'd be per ERU. So per household. Yeah. So, and again, that's really rough math. I literally just kind of spit that out, but it's directionally correct. So that's about what it would cost. And again, when I look at this, and I think the conversation that we've had as a board, whether it's soccer park or amenities, our position is we want to provide amenities that are for Gateway as a whole. You know, that's why we put bocce ball courts over at, so we could get more use out of individuals that may not have play. When I look at this plan and I think it's great, it's based on direct feedback from our residents. Um, I think it is multi-generational, multi-use, multi-seasonal. Uh, and there's, there's aspects that I think, um, are, there's components of this that would be a plus to your community depending on where it is. And there might be some that are, that compete. But again, I'm not going to go to this, this park if I'm a member of Gateway Greens to play tennis, but I will go for the walking park, maybe if, uh, you know, if there's some other elements. So that's what we're looking at, it's the bigger picture. Uh, we want this park to be inclusive of multi-generations and really speak to, and I'd love to see, you know, you know, uh, something, Pelican's got great amenities over there, but we want to make sure that we speak to, speak to them as well if they're going to be paying for it. So, yes, sir.
Doug, the band shell in Pelican is a particularly, uh, active amenity that generates revenue for us.
Yes.
Because we have, you know, regular series of concerts and, uh, a lot of people support that. I mean, to the point where it's standing room only.
Yeah. Was there a comment from the, so let's just get a couple of comments because we got a lot more to go through today.
I'm Marino Zarotti from Hammock Cove. Uh, just wondering if you've thought of a community partner, like a Publex or Boston Red Sox to, to help out, something like that.
I think.
Money's going to be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the one thing we have to be careful of is we want to try to keep this thing private. And so we have to be very careful with, you know, leveraging county funds and, and leveraging other things because it limits our ability.
Well, you can't keep it totally private, but you could have a, a rates schedule differential because you have the residents who will be paying assessments for the O and M and the debt service of a certain amount. And so you could have charged enhanced or elevated rates, fees and charges for others outside.
Right, yeah. So there's, there's a lot of consideration, but I think at this point, we're open to just about, you know, to, to, you know, uh, nothing's off the table at this point. Was there another comment online? Okay, yes, sir, come up. And let's take two more questions and then we have some other items to, to move on to. There's one, one gentleman in front of you, really quick in the green chair. Okay, you're closer and you're taller, so why don't you go ahead?
The money that we're talking about here, is that on top of the projected increase that, that we're going to see in assessments?
We have had, we have some.
This is not budgeted in at all.
We do have, we have 500,000 budgeted, you know, but again, that's, yeah. So, yes, it would be.
We're talking about a lot of money per unit, right? When you include the, the improvements that we got to make to stuff that's crumbling and so forth. Why wouldn't you borrow the money to fix all those issues? Why wouldn't you borrow the money to fix all those issues and accrue money for something like this in the future?
And that's a good point.
That's exactly what I wanted.
That's the conversation that we've had too. So, and again, not to derail to the budget conversation, but we put everything in there. Everything that we feel is critical that needs to be addressed either today or within the next three years. And that's just budgeting. Now, how we fund it is part of our ongoing conversation. So we may, you know, debt finance, let's say 50% of what's in that, that budget today, which will, you know, lower the cost down. So we haven't got to those creative conversations yet. Right now, it's like we've thrown everything in that's critical need that has to be addressed today or the next three years. How we fund and finance it is really part of the next conversation.
See, that's, that is the critical thing, is we have two components of cost. The wishes, the wants and likes, which are elective and the things that we have to do with our utility that we have to do. We don't have a choice on that last one. We have to do it. And that is the majority of what this huge increase is. If we can debt finance it, obviously five years would help, 20 years would help a lot. And it would significantly bring this down. But that second component, the elective, is a voting issue of the people of what you want. And that's what we're trying to get back. What is your information? So far, you've told us what you like. Now we're going to tell you what it costs and what it's going to cost you and we'll find out how much you really like it. That's where we're at.
Yeah.
Do these expenditures have to be voted on by the general?
No.
No.
Members?
We're elected and we make those decisions for you.
Well, it's going to be.
But we get your input.
You know, I don't think everybody's seen the assessment increases.
Oh, they, believe me in Gateway Greens. Uh, I didn't eat yesterday. I got attacked because they thought that what Chris put out was the HOA and it was the CDD. But it is on the street. Uh, for the first time, we have been transparent as, as board, telling people what it costs to run this place and do it right.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we happen to be at the wrong place at the right time. These things have to be fixed. But these other things we're talking about are elective. We don't have to go out and build everything Bill put up there. We could say, take arbitrarily, say, anything that had a citizen input of 25% or greater. We'll look at those and perhaps phase those. Like somebody else said earlier, well, we only got 1,300 votes out of, uh, 7,000. Well, it's 7,000 ERUs, but it's actually 4,800 plus or minus households. So if you do that, 20% is not bad, but I'd love to have like 40% back to hear what the people really want on this. Because I'm telling you, maybe Bobby hasn't heard in her neighborhood, but the jungle drums are beating loud in my neighborhood. Don't you dare come out and try a $7 million tennis court project on me again.
Yeah.
Don't even try it. And I'm afraid if we don't watch how we do this, this thing's going to go in flames before it ever even get off the ground.
Yeah, and I disagree with that. I think, I think this community wants to improve itself. I think they're willing to invest. I mean, we've got so many people here just about a pool that again is, you know, to be real, the, the, the usage of that pool is not where, where we'd love it to be. So I think there's people that want to enhance the community, understand the value of amenities in addition to making sure infrastructure is where it needs to be. So there's a lot of points of consideration. Anything else from you?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Steve Brown.
Okay.
Steve Brown.
Two, like, two comments and we really have to get moving.
Steve, where, where are you from? Oh, okay.
Bob Raisler, Timber Ridge. I'll make this quick. When I moved down here 17 years ago, I am paying less property tax in my house, which was similar in size to the house I had when I lived in Michigan, a lot less. Those taxes in Michigan have since gone up. Ours are going up gradually. The differential is horrendous. When you talk about me paying property tax for the facility I live in, to make sure the roads are safe, the sewer is good, the water is this and the water is that, recreation facilities are available, in my opinion, and I don't know where you all came from, where I came from, this is a cheap place to live from a property tax perspective. I'm not standing up and telling the board to spend money like crazy people, but I do think we ought to fix what's broken and make available some nice things. So when people live here, they enjoy living here.
Thanks for recognizing that.
That's a great statement. Yes, ma'am.
Marion Fritz from Silver Lakes. I'd like to know how many, um, survey we're going to do that.
Uh, close to 2,000.
Okay, the percentage of people.
Chris, can you ask her to speak in the microphone?
Oh, the percentage.
Close to 2,000, so there's, I think the number is about 48. Uh, there's 7,000 ERUs, but about 48 is the number of, of respondents that we were anticipating. So that's, it, you know, it's about 20, 20-some percent, which is not, not bad. There's seven thousand ERUs, but about forty eight is the number of of respondents that we were anticipating. So that's, you know, it's about twenty, twenty some percent, which is not not bad. Thirty percent is.
Except when you live in Silver Lakes and you didn't get it.
Well, we'll make sure that your voice, so. We've we've made every attempt to get it out, but it's it's tough.
My concern is, I understand what you're doing. You're trying to keep it vocal and keep it open. But the bottom line is, everybody counts in Gateway, not just certain communities.
Yes, ma'am. Completely understand that. Thank you.
Pass that on to your cam.
So I appreciate everyone for coming today. Yep, one more. Closing remarks.
Kind of at this stage, at the conclusion of our presentation, I guess, is just looking for some direction from the board, how you would like us to proceed from here.
So I think what we'll do is let's circle back, let's circle back with staff and then we'll give you some direction, you know.
Can I ask a quick question from the Zoom?
I'm right in the middle of a state. We will get back to you early, early next week with some direction. So, yeah. Who was that that was speaking?
Melissa from Eagle Point. The cost, I understand the cost of the facility, but is there any estimated cost? I know you mentioned a hundred dollars, twenty years. But what about the cost of maintaining the park throughout that twenty years? What about that cost?
We don't know exactly that number yet because we haven't finalized exactly what the park would entail. I threw in, basically, I matched the
We know we're spending two ninety one right now on a very limited park.
And is that annual?
That's annual, yeah. Two ninety one. Two hundred ninety one thousand is our budget for next year for just that pool. Just the pool. And we're talking here something magnitudes of operation and maintenance more, not counting security. We haven't even got into that. So I don't think two ninety ones even in the ballpark. I think you're looking at double that number on operation and maintenance. And that number scares me because you have.
So before there's any vote or anything moving forward, these are all things we have to work out. And this is not going to happen overnight. It's not going to be something that's going to be a month. It's going to take us a couple of months just to go through due diligence. But I will say that is what this board is committed to is due diligence. We want to make sure we understand what the what the wants and needs are in the community, what your appetite appetite is to pay for it. And more importantly, and what I'd like to 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 get input from Holmats is, how do you evaluate the value of something like this? That when you invest six million in this type of facility, how can you evaluate that to to housing or to track? Because now I know that if I was going to put a pool in my house, I could have an appraiser come over and say, if you make this improvement to your house, you could you could put it on the market tomorrow and you'll see a twenty percent increase in your in your resale value. That's something we want to talk about as well. Because I can say all day long, are you willing to pay a hundred, hundred twenty five dollars annually for this new amenity? If I can tell you that that's going to increase your property value by alone by five percent, you know, then that might make you say, oh, yeah, well, that's an investment, not only to the community, but also an investment to to my property and the value that I have. So thank you all for for being here today. And I appreciate all the comments around the pool and the parks. We are going to get moving. So thank you all. And if you want to exit, now's a good time to do it.
Mr. Chairman, we do have, since we moved forward with just pool comments, the presentation, we do have three people that had public comments, not related to the pool.
Yeah, so we're going to give everyone. Thank you all. We're going to give everyone just a minute or two to exit so we can get the noise back down. If you can do me a favor, if you are exiting, please politely exit so we 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 can continue. Thank you all. Okay, and we do have three comments that were non non related to the items that we that we talked about previously. Chris, who are those three?
We'll start with Rod Senior.
And I think, oh, there's Rod. Rod, you want to come up? Yeah, you're up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, board. Rod Senior, Gateway Greens, want to talk about the twenty twenty two budget and its proposed form, draft form. Obviously, obviously, we we have sticker shock at the moment. We're looking at an increase in single family from six hundred and seventy five up to thirteen hundred and eight, which is ninety four percent. I I am quite surprised that that was out on the street in that format, to be honest with you. Following up on my recent discussion with you from here, I'm seriously encouraging you to look at twenty years. I've been able to look at what's available from various commercial banks that I deal with. I'm sure you're going to get something similar from your financiers. Five years is around two and a half percent. Twenty years is around two and three quarters percent. That's where we're at, it seems to me. I'd be surprised if you were much different. If you look at what that means on five million bucks, let's just take that number. Five million over five years, two and a half percent, looking at the loan calculator, is a million, just over a million bucks a year, obviously, divided by six thousand three hundred and fifty ERUs, which is a hundred and seventy seven dollars per ERU per year. If you go over twenty years, which I would really ask you to seriously consider, then the the five million is three hundred and twenty four thousand a year for the, which is per year, yours fifty one dollars.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I based my pool calculation.
I know you did. I know you did. And I I I know that there's a bond validation required in this with bond counselor, advertising, engineering, facility reports. I get all that. I think it's worth tagging that on and going twenty years. I really do. There's a lot of people, including me, concerned about this enormous increase. And I'm not questioning the the fact that you're spending it. I'm questioning the method of finance.
Yeah. And I will say, Rod, I mean, I think you you've listened to enough board minutes that we, from a financing and perspective, nothing is off the table with us. Whatever we could do to get that down. And just just for the record, last year's annual increase, we've done a single digit increases. And a half percent last year, six point six, and then nine point eight the year before that. So, you know, this this board does have precedent of trying to keep that assessment in single digits, at least for the past couple of years.
Okay.
So not interrupt you, but you.
No, no, you. I I don't think I'm going to be able to make the public hearing on the budget. So I do want to take this opportunity to just make a couple of comments on the budget itself. And line items that hit you in the face, million dollars, these are operating items, okay? Million dollars on stormwater repairs and and half a million on storm system pipe. That's one and a half million bucks. Now, the question, and I'm not an engineer, Ed, you know, we know each other very well. Is it really all necessary in twenty twenty two? That's my question. Do we really get need to get hit with that in one year? Bathymetric study, hundred and fifty thousand. Soccer, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the soccer drive, okay, for the paving, for the parking. I don't know what the annual spend is on the soccer park. I know it used to be around two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars on operating cost to maintain the soccer. But do we really need to pave that parking lot? Half the kids that play soccer don't live in Gateway. Sidewalks, three quarters of a million dollars next year. And my question about sidewalks, and Tony, you, we know that this county owns the sidewalks. I know we hold them harmless for tree root damage. But is it all due to tree roots? And if it is all due to tree roots, three quarters of a million dollars with a tree root damage, what is the process that we're going to go through with the county? They own the roads. Are we going to work in concert with them, in cooperation with them and say, look, we're going to organize three quarters of a million dollars of the spend on these sidewalks? Wouldn't it be a good time for them to correct any other repairs on the sidewalks at the same time? Otherwise, they're they're bringing machines in after us, so to speak. So I'm just wondering if you considered that. Is it all tree roots? Or is it not? If it's not all tree roots, why aren't the country chipping in?
Because we on the sidewalk.
No, we do not.
We do not. County owns the sidewalk.
The county owns the sidewalk. Ask the ask your attorney, Doug.
What we need to do is to get all of our sidewalks identified, get the county out here, and then we walk them and determine what percentage of those are repair and replacement that are due to trees and those that are just repaired because of age. They get the latter, we get the former.
What I mean is, we own the repairs if they're.
No, we know, Doug, no, Doug.
Not own, I missed. We're responsible for the repairs if they're tree damage. That's what I misspoke.
It's a whole, it's a whole harmless agreement. So the county owns the sidewalks. We hold them harmless for landscaping damage.
The key issue was the district wanted to retain the vegetation and trees, which are the oak trees, which create the ambiance and everything we all talked about. So that's the trade off.
We we know that the county has skin in the game here. The issue, what we need to do now is that that seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you.
How much is theirs? How much is ours?
Thank you. That's that's a hell of an important point. Look at the number. I guess that quarter million dollars are for maintenance and repairs for next year. Is that minor roads in the budget? Is that for minor roads, that two fifty?
I believe it is.
It can't be for major roads because we don't.
We only have minor roads.
So what is the two fifty four? Do you happen to know?
Where's, Brian, what is that?
Two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, two fifty.
Actually, we have over six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars of the roads we need eventually replaced and repaired. We put all part of that part of the five million dollars.
Well, the roads that they turned over to us were just resurfaced when we got them. So they've got a twenty year life.
We've got a two hundred and fifty.
We've got some roads that we have that were not fixed.
Okay, we've got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item for operating, for maintenance and repairs under roadways. I just want to know what it was.
Okay, we'll we'll take it out of that.
Thank you.
We're fast.
Line by line item discussion.
Okay.
Want to extend it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Two hundred and ninety one thousand. Okay, two, the gentleman that spoke earlier, was it Tim? Yeah. Okay, let's say we've got a thousand users, okay, three hundred thousand dollars annual spend on the pool. That's pretty well staff and heating and operating stuff, chemicals and all that. So, you know, that's three hundred bucks per user per year. I was sitting in your position a few years ago, and we had a ton of people come because they were. My proposal at the time was to introduce a user fee. That for the people who are using the pool to to contribute towards the cost of running it, which is heating and staff. The rest of us, six out of seven, Ed, and I agree with you, are paying for the capital, we're all paying for the capital, six out of seven of us aren't using the pool. But we're all contributing to the capital cost and the reserve if we form, create a reserve. But the operating cost is is right there every year. And the user, in my opinion, just like Lee County, we ought to ask the people who are so enthusiastic about having a pool if they're prepared to pay a user fee for it. Something for you to consider, something for the audience, most of which is now gone. I would have liked to done a straw poll and asked them how many would that would be prepared to contribute three hundred bucks a year or even half of that. And I I guess not many would have put their hand up. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. We can all be neighbors together.
Hey, guys, we don't we don't have banter back and forth during the meeting. Thank you.
All right. So my final point of, I'm I'm obviously including here in the annual.
And Rod, we need to wrap up. We've got.
Yes, Doug, I was trying to do five minutes, but I was interrupted from the board. My my final point is that with this kind of increase forecast for twenty twenty two and with something like that in the offering, I would ask you to consider twenty, two and three quarters, if that's kind of number you're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. We appreciate your input.
Okay, Joe Schofield, Pelican Preserve.
Tony has a comment.
One thing, I know.
One second, Joe.
I know there's been extensive discussion about a twenty year borrowing. If we all know anything with maturity, any borrowing greater than five year maturity requires validation.
Right.
I'm not aware of any validation proceedings validating borrowings for maintenance, operations and maintenance. It's always capital expenditure. I'm just trying to make sure it's clear because I know some of the discussion was interweaving the two.
That's that's why Tony, a couple of meetings ago, I don't know, I don't know if you were here or not, but the issue was, I went through and highlighted only costs that had service life, capital really.
Recall that discussion.
And we came up, I think I came up with three point seven five million. And I think that maybe staff went a little bit further, more depth than I came up and came up with five million. But I believe we're we're covered. We're not talking.
I'm trying to make sure because I know some of the conversation.
Thanks for clarification. Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Joe Schofield, Pelican Preserve. I'm representing P PAC at this moment. You have an agenda item, item three A I, Palazzo Road Conveyance. And I just wanted to let you you folks know that the P PAC supports this land transfer from that condo association to the CDD. And Mike Lamb fear, who is the president of the Palazzo Condo Association is here. So when you get to discussing this, if you have questions, we would be free to answer and support anything you might might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And the last one we have, Chris?
Actually, I'm afraid I have two. One was chatted in online. And MJ, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I just, I don't know if you guys have the answer, but I've.
Next Tuesday. Okay. And all right, it sounds like progress, slow but sure, keeping everything going forward. Any new concerns or questions for me today?
None for me.
Okay, all right. I'd like to check back again next week. Is that okay?
That's fine. Okay, MJ, you're right ahead.
MJ or MG?
MG, uh, I don't know, Chris, who was?
Says MG.
I've just been hearing, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but there's a vacant lot, a huge vacant lot across like next to Gateway. Do you know what area I'm talking about? A huge field. And I've been hearing rumors that they're going to put in like some sort of apartment housing or low income housing there. Have you heard anything about that?
That's KO, that's KO. That's that's not rumor. That's been going for about a year and it is real. And it's going to be about two hundred and.
Twenty one.
This is it?
It's it's real.
Is it low income housing or just regular apartments?
We have not heard that it's low income housing.
Okay.
That question came up when the developer came in and we did not get anything indicating that it was going to be low income.
Chris, are going to go in the apartments right there?
No, it's same, same people.
Okay, anything else?
And then the other question about the increase on the budget, the thirteen hundred, is that like a one time increase for the storm, for whatever repairs that need to be going on? Or is is that going to be kind of the go to for the years to follow? Are we to expect similar increases? Like to stay around thirteen hundred? Or do you plan on bringing it back down after making those repairs? Or what's kind of the plan?
Well, the 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 assessment that we're talking about is is all inclusive to our complete budget for the district. It's not one thing in particular. So that, what you're talking about, that that increase that's on the board right now, it's again, the high water mark. We threw everything in that budget that we feel needs to be addressed. The critical needs either today or within the next couple of years. So we're going to be cutting that back. You know, the first phase is to put everything in. And then we go through several iterations. And just as a former reference, you know, we always start with a high water mark. And then last year, our increase was around six point six percent. The year before that was nine point eight. So, you know, it's this board's, I think, direction to try to keep the assessment as low as possible, whether it's through different ways of financing or doing multi year plans, as we've been doing for several years. So I will tell you, I don't know how much it's going to decrease, but I would almost guarantee that it will be significantly lower than what is put out today. That that first initial pass on purpose, it was deliberate to show the residents exactly how much money needs to be spent to address critical items that we have in the community today.
Will that increase like the quality of our water? Because I know here in Eagle Point, the water is very harsh.
We get our water from Lee County and we just pass it on.
Okay, so it won't change the quality of the water.
That I'm aware of.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. And you said there's one more, Chris.
One more. Matt Chitwood, Mahogany Lane. Matt?
Matt Chitwood, Mahogany Run. I'll keep this brief because I know you guys are way behind. Overall, the park, Gateway Commons Plan presented by Holmats, I just want to say, I don't want to see food trucks there, but that's that's me. I think if you bring in the splash area, you'll increase usage there. And that's what I think your goal is, is to increase usage. And I used to drive my kids halfway across town to Lakes Park to go to their splash park when they were that age. So and I always thought it'd be great to have one there. The Fort Myers Brewery campus, I thought that was a positive. I don't know all the details about it, but I'll be interested to hear what you guys, what comes up. It sounds positive to me, but I do want to hear the details. Item four B, the forest main relocation. I've been talking with Chris about the trees that are going to be removed, the oak trees and some of the palms. And I guess my question, and again, while while I'll make the statement while I'm standing here is. And I guess my question, and again, while while I'll make the statement while I'm standing here, is I'm always looking for the reason they're being removed. And I'm gonna talk with Chris about it directly off off record, but it's more of the reasoning behind. If it's to if it's to take a tree down because it's more convenient for the builder or the vendor to do something, I'm not, I don't think that's an acceptable reason. Uh, but I'll get that information from Chris and maybe address it with you guys in the future. And one comment that came up today from one of the board members, and I forget who said it, was talking about get your information from the CDD. Um, directly, I understand what that what you're saying with that. The problem is, what I think has been demonstrated today and it demonstrated over the past few months is people don't trust what they're, they don't trust the CDD members because of things that have happened. So that's a gap that I think, you know, you guys are gonna have to work on and we're gonna have to work on. It's not just here, it's every level of government. But because of things that have happened, there's been a level of trust that's been broken that'll have to be reformed. So that's all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt, we appreciate it. Okay, moving right along, uh, Tony, we will start with you finally getting the staff reports and we're only about an hour and a half behind.
Tony, speaking to your microphone, please. I apologize, Mr. Guy, thank you, is that better?
Yes, much better, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, this item is the item that was referenced by Mr. Schofield in his comment. Uh, it's a request from the Palazzo at Pelican Preserve Master Condominium Association, Inc. I'll call it the Palazzo Master Association to have the district accept the ownership conveyance of Palazzo Way. Uh, and what I outlined in the memorandum were some considerations that need to be taken into account and also the statutory requirement as to the specifications as to the roadway. It has to, the roadway has to be equal to or exceeding the applicable specifications of Lee County. Or, uh, that's what the statute provides for that. And so that's a threshold question whether or not it does exceed or equals the applicable specifications of Lee County for such a road with public for public streets. And then I listed the pros and cons that the board can consider, uh, in providing this and maybe giving some direction to, um, the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee to look at all these issues and to come back with recommendations to the board. And as part of that, this memorandum, I also provided an aerial photograph, uh, from LEPA of Palazzo Way. And once, assuming for sake of discussion that the district wishes to take ownership and it can take ownership and it does take ownership. Then becomes a public road, public street which access cannot be denied. And my concern is, it appears that a segment of it goes into like a driveways for the parking areas for the condominium associations. And so are legally, then the public would have access to those art. And so the the question would be whether we'd excise those out in the legal description, if the board was of mind to accept Plots away and just take, I'll call it the little serpentine segment and exclude the roadway. But I think that's a discussion that P-PAC can have, I will talk with them about that when we have the presentation. My recommendation is then to, uh, submit this to and have it reviewed in detail by Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. I know they've already indicated they're in favor of it. I don't know if they took into account the issue about the parking areas and then come back. And then we also need to have a budget item or task authorization to the district engineer to evaluate the condition of the roadways, whether or not. Uh, and I know there's an indication from Mr. Lamphier, said there's an engineering report. I don't know if it was looking at it from the perspective of the statutory scheme. And if there are any additional upgrades that need to be provided prior to the district having the roadway conveyed.
That that was my big question is, has a final, pre-final inspection been done? And a punch list established of all the broken curbs, all the pipe that's full of sand? All of the things that we're going to inherit, have they been inspected and a punch list done and the developer fixed them? Have we had that done?
Hey, Joe, if you're gonna speak, just you gotta step up.
Doug, or I mean, Ed, from the.
Bad track record over there.
Can you hear me?
Find out.
Yeah, one second.
From from the, from the perspective of the sewer cleaning, that is already included in, uh, our inspection process. So we don't have any issues with that at all. The stormwater piping is all okay. I have discussed with Mr. Measy, because I had some concerns, just as Tony pointed out, uh, you know, to know exactly what we're getting. I hadn't considered about about the broken curbing and stuff, but everything, you're right, needs to be looked at. And that's why we'll get a recommendation back from P-PAC. And I think that they're looking at the right stuff.
Yeah, I just, I just make sure there's a final inspection and a punch list developed so that we.
Absolutely.
Ending over to them and give them a timeline to get it fixed.
Yeah, I totally agree.
We will, we will certainly discuss that at our next meeting.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna push this back, uh, until that punch list and final review has taken place. Final review by P-PAC with the considerations that Tony has called out.
And I don't know if P-PAC can really do the punches, because again, one of the threshold questions is whether it meets that statutory criteria.
Well, our staff needs to be.
Should be already.
Yeah, yeah, it's just engineer.
So do we, do we need a task authorization?
For.
To get engaged in this?
I would say yes.
Alright, so Chris.
So we shall get our our, the district engineering firm involved to what, inspect that road?
Yeah, yeah, look, just do a walkthrough.
Okay.
Through, check it, the the road condition of the road.
Okay.
And then curbs, gutters that are broken.
Okay.
Also, they would need to, uh, check the permitting or the whatever approvals were provided by Lee County and the construction drawings and record drawings. Because again, the statute says, uh, the road has to be equal to or exceeding the applicable specifications of Lee County. Uh, so that would need to be, need to look at what the city of Fort Myers approved and see if that meets.
So somebody had to have signed off on pavement thicknesses and all that type of testing, density testing. That would be able to, uh, give Tetra Tech the ability to say it was or wasn't.
Mike Lamphier, and, uh, I'd just like to say that, you know, Plaza Way is basically just an extension of Pelican Reserve Boulevard. It was turned over to us because of a kind of a boilerplate type language that they had for, uh, Ravenna and Sienna, two other condominium associations that have side drives. And so they wrapped it all together, used the same language and they just turned the whole thing over to it. So we are the only association in Pelican Reserve that has the entire road and the infrastructure needed to us.
Hold on, you just said something here, hold on. Tony, is this a condo association road? Because a condo association road, they're a whole different ballgame, that's not a public road, those are private roads. Capital Reserve, model condo association.
If you notice in the, I referenced and attached a letter from the attorney of Godea Damsic and DeBose. Who, their opinion is that the association can in fact leave this roadway segment to the to the district. And what I mentioned in here with regards, the necessary documents would be. Necessary assurances and documents from the master and its council as to the validity and legal ability of the master association to deed or convey it to the district. And that would be in the form of a title policy, an attorney's opinion.
But the issue is typically roads of a condo association are not public or thoroughfare roads. They're they're the benefit.
But what it did in here though is, in the letter, again, I did not review the condominium documents. Uh, Mr., screw with this one, Molly Magiano, I'm sorry, not Mr. Ms. Not matter, but I'm sure she will give me a hard time now. It says that, uh, the roadway was neither planted as a separate roadway dedicated to the district nor was included within the condominium property for condo one or condo two. And her letter indicates, it says, as such, the Plaza Way roadway ultimately ended up getting conveyed by the developer via quick claim deed to the Plaza Master Association constitutes association property under the Palazzo Master Association governing document. Now.
Somebody was asleep at the switch when that went.
And and again, that's why I referenced, we need a title opinion, we need a title policy and other assurances as to the validity. They don't make that conveyance.
Yeah, Tony, you're a hundred percent right and Ed, to your point, if you rode out there, if you rode down Palazzo, looked at the road.
Tony mentioned.
It would look like every other road in the community.
Hey, Bob, Bob?
Yeah.
Go ahead, there was too many people talking, you have a comment?
If if someone was to ride down Pelican Preserve Community Boulevard to the end, which is in a cloverleaf, or I mean a circle at, uh, the end of Plaza, it would look like every other road in Pelican. So I totally support what Palazzo is trying to do and I think the board will rationally. But we need to dot the i's and cross the t's, the legal part of it, because it is a condo association. And you're right, somebody was asleep at the switch when they did it. This should be a road of all Pelican and it should be conveyed. But I want to make sure of saying that, that we're not getting into any parking areas or anything else that is, you know, not truly. A road.
With the film easy and and, you know, we will look at that, we're not interested in taking over any parking areas. So we're gonna have to redo the redo the plot to make sure that we don't, we don't do that. It's one of the many things we have to do.
Yeah, I know, you and I know it because we talked, but the board didn't know, we talked.
The rec, I I think the recommendation that it be turned back to P-PAC to do, do everything that needs to be done and then bring it to the board is where you ought to go, I think, I think the discussion needs to end.
Bill, you're just accepting everything that's inside the curb line. You're not talking about the park.
Basically, Ed, yeah.
We don't, we're, uh, we will take care of our own part, we are, uh, we have reserves for.
I think that's clear, Tony, you got one more statement that I need.
Just quickly, from the standpoint of the cost fees and expenses associated with it, in order to get direct, correct legal description for the roadway then, that would need to be performed by an engineer and a survey performed, I don't know if the association has someone in mind. Any survey or engineering firm can perform that and it can be checked by the district engineer, but that's an expense that the board needs to make a determination or P-PAC may recommendation as to who will bear that expense.
So Chris, we we just need a task authorization for Tetra Tech to complete, uh, the engineering requirements in conjunction with deep inspection and in conjunction with P-PACs. And that cost to be borne by Palazzo or P-PAC.
By Palazzo.
Palazzo, I guess let those guys find over, but okay.
No, Mr. Chair, I think that would be an appropriate motion to be made is that, that the board consensus is they like the proposition. The consensus is to have, the motion is to have P-PAC review it and have Tetra Tech engaged by task authorization to evaluate the condition of the roadway with the cost of any surveys and attorney's fees, title opinion, et cetera, to be borne by Palazzo.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, okay, and I'm gonna pull forward item. Uh, under Public Works two, one, we've got a speaker in today, just in the interest of, of sensitive to time, we'll, we'll let him. What? Four slides, okay, great.
Yes, hello everyone, uh, thank you very much for giving me a few minutes here, you guys have a great community. Um, let me quickly introduce myself, my name is Robert Peltram, I'm the president and CEO of a local non-for-profit five oh one two C three youth soccer organization. We have, say what?
Sorry, one sec.
It is under Public Works, uh, item one, so it's two, one. Public Works News Soccer Field.
Soccer issue, oh, okay, okay. Sorry.
Uh, no problem, um, so we have currently one thousand members in our program. We are spread across Southwest Florida, uh, in Norfolk Myers, Cape Coral and Naples. And, uh, ultimately what we do, we provide youth soccer for all levels, for the elite level. Our top level teams are competing at the national stage and our lowest tier is the youngest kids, all the way down to age two. And that is our recreational level. Um, we're very proud of our socio-economical impact that we make in the community. And, um, that is ultimately last year, we've created thirty five staff position within our organization and we have given out about, uh, forty thousand dollars in scholarship for underprivileged children within our organization. So why I'm here today, um, is ultimately what what I need and what I can do for you as a community. Obviously, you can imagine as a growing organization, uh, you know, fields are at a premium. And, uh, the Gateway District, Gateway Community has, uh, an abundance of that and a beautiful soccer field. And we feel that with a, uh, mutual beneficial relationship that that will last several years, uh, that we can help each other. And that's the way that I envision that could be, um, from a standpoint, we come in as a very strong financial partner. Um, we would like to improve your cost to income ratio. Um, currently, uh, you're collecting only a fraction of what you're spending on the park. And we would like to narrow that margin in the midterm and long term, uh, which will obviously in in the end benefit also the residents of of Gateway and the district in in general. Um, we also are fully prepared for improvements of the soccer facility as a partner contributing. Um, whether it is the the turf, you know, it could be artificial turf, uh, that is always an attractive scenario. We have never flood situation, never flood issues. Um, that is initially a a major cost factor, but in the long run it pays off. And it's also about equipment, we're fully prepared to bring in, um, most of our own equipment. If needed, replace some of the existing equipment and, um, support the district this way. Um, we would also like to take on, um, the exclusive role of managing partner. Currently, you guys have about three or four entities that are utilizing the park. And, uh, so that is a bit of an administrative nightmare, I can imagine, for, um, the board to deal with that. And we would like to take on that role to say, if you have to close fields, if there's any maintenance issues, whatnot, you should speak to one of us and we'll take care of that, of the rest of the of the other entities that are currently utilizing the facility. Um, this could also mean that we potentially manage, absorb or include these, uh, existing, um, organizations into our organization. That would be obviously subject to further discussions with those entities, how they would like to proceed. Um, and then also we would like to support, uh, the district in maintaining the appearance of the facility. We are very much aware of the fact that, uh, this needs to be a long-term vision versus, you know, organizations coming in and using it on an hourly rate or on a weekly rate, they don't care, they're just coming out here to take a look at these fields or to use the field. They don't care how they leave the field. We actually do understand the concept of a maintenance and longevity. And this is something that I think we can help each other, um, in the long run as well. Um, and then my last but not least point would be the perks that we can provide for the Gateway residents as well. So that could go from quality product, um, you know, I heard earlier, there's only a a fraction of Gateway residents actually using, um, the facilities here, you know, I don't know why that is, is it because of the quality or the lack of, um, programming? I don't know, but we can definitely come in with a quality product that would, uh, maybe be able to change that. Uh, discounted rates for residents, everybody who's, you know, a Gateway resident could receive discounts, whether it's on the actual programming, on on additional programming like camps or, uh, programming that we would implement. And this is my last point here with the, uh, specific programming for the residents, actually. Um, you know, I see you guys have a great community here, uh, our staff consists of, you know, doctors, uh, of therapy. We have a specialist in life kinetic, those could be people who can come in and actually offer something for the residents. That means, you know, specialty training sessions, uh, rehabilitation, and we can do that during the day in the evenings. So we have a, uh, abundance of, uh, professionals within our organization that could potentially be helpful for the community. So that's pretty much my short presentation, um, and I would open us up to questions if you guys have any, obviously.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So what I'm understanding is, is you're coming in offering basically a management position on our soccer complex. Along with the fact that you could be bringing what could be another league or the opportunity of another league or a merger of leagues?
It is ultimately, our organization is in existence, we have a lot of, uh, Gateway residents within our organization already. That is how I'm aware of your, uh, your, uh, soccer fields and your district. Um, so ultimately, yes, we would bring in a, an entity, uh, similar to what you already have at this point in time. You know, with the Gateway Soccer Association and there's another entity that's using it already.
Do you have, this is a loaded question, do you have access to the information that you need to put this into a proposal?
I have the information as to the point where the information that is relevant for you, that is what I would need to know.
I would think you would need operation and maintenance costs and stuff like that from us.
Right.
To be able to incorporate that into your management proposal back to us on how you would handle this. The bottom line to us is going to be, what's the cost to us?
Right, well, it's actually not gonna cost you anything, we are actually coming in and taking cost off you. Currently, you're collecting about seventy thousand dollars from three hundred thousand that you're spending. So we want to bring this closer, so nothing is changing. So nothing is changing really from you guys and I would not really necessarily need, uh, this would be more of a discussion point, obviously. Okay. Well, Robert, this is what we're spending. How much can you guys contribute over the next five to 10 years? This is, this is the conversation that we would have, but fact is currently the situation that you have is you're collecting about around $70,000 from these entities and you're spending about 300 on the complex. We will bring that a lot closer.
And then the other question is, are you doing this anyplace else on a similar situation as Gateway?
Uh, not in this, uh, capacity. We're working with Lee County, so we have facilities in Norfolk Myers and Cape Coral and Naples that we're using. But that would not be an exclusive partnership or management. This is just, I call up the county and ask, listen, we have 300 kids. I need a place to play for them. And they are saying, okay, well, this field is open, you know, so that's what we.
So you're, you've talked predominantly operating costs. How would you handle any capital improvements that have to be done? For example, turf replacement and/or lighting.
So those would be the conversations that we would have to have. And, and that's something that where I would come in and, and sit down with you guys and say, okay, well, so what is the cost that's coming?
Kind of over here on the plan.
Yes.
You've got to plan that in.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, for us, it's something, you know, it shouldn't be coming in from a situation where right now, when we come in as the, as a new entity that all of a sudden we're gonna spend, uh, 2 million on, you know, redoing the fields, that we don't have the capacity. We are non-for-profit as well, but at the same time, uh, we would work with you towards improvements and that's the, that's the goal. And ultimately, when you know, you don't, you know, you have to spend this money on improving these fields. And now you have a strong partner who is, you know, supporting you with that and maybe can chip in in a 30%, 50% uh, capacity.
And then the last link is just that when you give the proposal, do you have a form of contract that we can start looking at?
Uh, that is can, can be put together. Absolutely.
So if I'm hearing correctly, I just want to make sure we, we're on the same page. The, what you're proposing is to, uh, decrease or offset the current annual cost that we.
O N M.
Yeah, the, the O and M annually and then be a potential partner for any future enhancements to the facilities.
Absolutely.
And what those enhancements are would be up for negotiation or, or conversation.
First thing we'd have to do is to identify to him what we know right now to be capital related issues. And those can be blended in either on a, a timing issue or a, a financed issue.
So if it was, so let's just say, uh, a, a long-term annual lease of those fields, you would be the managing entity.
Yes.
Uh, any existing leagues or any existing programs that would take place on those fields would go through your organization.
Right.
And any improvements, whether it's maintenance or capital would be part of the contract conversation. So turf is one thing, but let's say you wanted to, you know, do enhancements to the concession stand or other things. That's, that's what we're really talking about. What kind of impact would the community have on two things? One, these parks are open for our residents. So how do we ensure that residents would still be able to have access, you know, to, to the fields on some level? And then two, we basically have two types of programs, three types of programs ran today. One, recreational soccer. There is a small, uh, competitive soccer league and then we have flag football. Those are the free, that's where we generate revenue from today, only those three. How would those be, how would, would we still have those services available?
Oh, the, the services will remain, uh, available. The only thing, and that is kind of part of the discussion where, uh, we would need to speak with those entities. They would need to understand the fact that there's an, uh, managing partner, executive managing, uh, organization coming in. They're reporting to them because I will be reporting to you guys, you know, and you have one person to deal with. And so from that standpoint would be at that point in time to decide, okay, uh, communication would be between us and them organizing, scheduling and all these things. Everything would continue the same way. The only thing is that from a soccer standpoint, like flag football, I don't do flag football. This would be a pure, pure conversation topic and scheduling topic with that. Exactly. But the soccer aspect, those would have to be conversations with those entities, how they would like to, uh, proceed. They could either come in under our organization, we're a very strong organization, we're a non-for-profit, we're with US Soccer. We are with Florida U-Soccer Association, so they have those options. Or they say, well, listen, we don't want that. What are our options to stay as an independent entity?
All the contractual relationships save with us go through you.
Absolutely.
Anything for you?
No question.
Uh, anything from, uh, Bob or, uh, Bill?
My, I, I have one question, Doug. Uh, and I, I don't know the answer, so I'll, you know, just pardon my ignorance. But we currently have a, a relationship with the soccer. I don't know the guy's name. But he comes in, does soccer for us and he's paying X amount of dollars to us. Would the contract that's offered to him to continue playing in any way add to or delete from his fees?
Well, I think the way, way I'm interpreting is if, if we have a company that's managing and responsible, uh, the, the programs that would fall underneath that umbrella would be, um, really under the jurisdiction of the management, managing entity. So, uh, so specifically with Gateway Soccer, uh, they would have to partner, negotiate or come to some, some type of agreement for that to continue. So, uh, I think that's probably part of the conversation on how our existing entities would operate if we, it's almost like a bidding process, you know, essentially. We basically gonna, we're gonna lease these fields in its entirety. Uh, and then it's up to that managing entity to really, as long as, I think our expectation of the board is that we continue to, to offer the same services that we have available today. And that there's no impact to quality of service availability, uh, from, from a product perspective. I think what we're trying to mitigate here, at least is what I'm reading into, is trying to mitigate the cost and staff oversight into the fields and potentially how we would fund future enhancements to, to the fields.
Well, the capital enhancements, I, I can understand that. What I'm trying to gapple with is.
Can I answer?
Why, why are these people in the business if they're not, you said not-for-profit, but there's an awful lot of hospitals that are not-for-profit that keep growing, 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 growing. And I, I don't want to have the current league be outpriced without at least knowing. And if we're gonna, you know, double their cost, I'd like to know that upfront if, if the gentleman that's talking from Florida West has a clue for that. Or lady offering the same services at the same price to the residents.
I would like to address that. So, so here's a scenario that I would kind of, um, as, as an example. So currently the district is collecting about $70,000, okay, from these three entities. Now, if we, if we as an entity come to the conclusion that over the next few years, we will be able to narrow that margin and bring it up instead of 70,000 to 150,000 that we will be able to give back to the district. Obviously these amounts that are now collected from that entity that they are right now collecting, that needs to come obviously to the managing partner. Okay. So that's one piece of this. And then the second part is that overall, these entities will have to decide, you know, what they want to do. And, and we will not, definitely not come in and say, okay, well, you guys are out. Uh, and now we're gonna raise all the prices on these families who have received the service for $120, $130 a year for recreational soccer. I'm not going to come in and charge them now 200. That is not how we operate.
So I think that would be part of Bob, our consideration in the, in the contract is, you know, we, an entity coming in, we would want some guarantees that the, that, that the cost would not be higher at some percentage over a certain amount of time. So I understand what you're saying. We don't want some, all of a sudden there's 50% increase and now we've priced people out of the services that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
One good thing that we also have, we, when Brian worked with, you know, the new numbers that we were going to use for the contract, it didn't. So we kind of have somewhat of numbers that what we think.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
And maybe one thing, if I can add also to that argument is that if you ask any of your current, uh, members or, or Leesees, um, in that number, we have given back about $40,000 in scholarships last year. I'm not a hundred percent sure anybody can match that number within the existing organizations at, at this point that you guys have. And so our social aspect and the economic impact that we're making is, is tremendous and we're very proud of that.
Okay, but I, I guess what I'm hearing with the volume and, and, you know, again, I'm not trying to be negative, but if the volume of usage on the field increases, it seems to me that the percentage of usage, which is currently 50% Gateway residents and 50% their competitors, that proportion could change dramatically to 80% outsiders, 20% Gateway. Am I correct in that assumption?
Based on my involvement in these leagues over the past 20 years, you have 50% and it varies from like 48 to 58. Just a little under 60 as far as residents versus non-residents. So you have, let's just say 50%, 50% of the participants live here in Gateway. There's another 20% of that population that what I call is first tier. They either work in this area, their kids go to school in the community. And then you have probably about 20% of that population that don't live here and their parents don't work here and they don't have any direct affiliation. So when we talk about 50 cent, or 50 cent, 50%, uh, that's a little misleading because it's probably closer to almost 70% of participants in Gateway have, that are participating in the leagues, have some affiliation to the community on some level.
But they pay no money.
Uh, as far as assessments.
Yes, they don't pay.
Right.
No, they're paying the league. They're paying the league. Right.
They don't pay, they don't pay gateway.
They don't pay any gateway fees.
Yeah.
Correct.
But in that 20% too, let me, that, those are individuals that either have to work here, go to school here, have lived here. Or again, you know, there can be future residents in the future.
Well, that's, it'd be interesting to see the proposal and to just see what this.
So thank you very much for coming in today. If we have any follow-up questions, we'll go through staff and get those to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Yeah, we appreciate you. Okay, uh, moving forward, we're going to go back, uh, to district engineer.
Can we take a two-minute recess?
Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, let's take a couple of minutes. We're gonna take, uh, let's just take five quick minutes. We'll, we'll reconvene at 5:25.
All right. It's gonna be hard to, uh, to finish this meeting by five o'clock.
We're gonna work through it. Next round is speed round.
They wouldn't let us out because of the light.
Oh, really?
Never rain to drop though, but it was like, I don't think I would run anyway.
Yeah. All right, let's, uh, let's get back to order. She's got 30 seconds.
Well, they're, they're prepared to spend some money. I don't know how much it's going to cost them, but I looked at that.
Yeah, when I looked at this. And it had 5:25, I was laughing out loud.
I didn't, I didn't see, was, was this guy's deal here?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but I mean, was, I didn't see anything in the.
WCI paid for the engineering study.
Oh, I'll make sure we get that.
They specifically said the road's not part of it.
Oh, okay. Because that wasn't a conveyance to C V D, we don't have those engineering reports.
I know. Well, I read an engineering study and I told Mike, I said, you didn't even want to bring it up. Because it doesn't include any road and any infrastructure under the road.
Where's Tony?
Those people got screwed. I read that study, good and fair, poor in one case. And I asked Mike, I said, did you get a checklist that they corrected?
Somebody popped their head out and tell Tony to come on in and we're waiting on you.
Tony. Hurry up.
All right, we'll keep moving. Uh, Tetra Tech, who's on from engineering? Steven, are you on? How do we know where Steven is?
Steven, we need a task order. Oh, I thought that'd get them.
Okay, we'll come back. So, uh, maybe we can send Steven a text.
I think when we jumped over him, they might've thought we were.
That we were done. Uh, let's go into district manager, uh, or district manager reports.
Oh, we had, we had the, uh, Lee County Sheriff here to talk about the, uh, plate reader and we're just gonna bring him back August 5th. And, uh, I was just gonna mention out of general.
What was it for?
Well, it's they, uh, they have a program with automated license free years. They went in Hampton Park and talked about it. It basically creates, here's the technology right here and there's some different vendors. So, um, if they're looking for someone or a plate number, you have a burglary and a plate's coming in and out of a.
Bob, it's on page 19.
We just purchased just today four, uh, plate readers from Vigilant. Uh, and we had them come out, show us what they can do. Where you have a typical plate reader and you have a night light, you can't see anything. These take away the light and allow you to focus brighter. We, yes, we put it at the entrance, then we're going to take our other four that we have and put those at the exit. So that we have them coming and going. We're having a lot of running over stuff, uh, think events happening in the community. Black car and it, it was XYZ license plate, but I didn't see the last three. Well, we know the color and the deal, we can go to that and pick it out.
What would be our, what would be our scope here? Like we would put them where?
We're just gonna listen and, you know, we could, with cooperation with the HOAs, we could do it, you know, with the C P D at main entrances. And that's really what they're gonna make a presentation on is the technology, how they're used it. You know, times the sheriff had his speed signs up by Hampton Park. Well, that was really coinciding with the number of break-ins and they had a plate reader on the back of that sign.
Oh, really?
That's all they had.
Yeah.
Please buckle up, there's a camera in there.
In the community, the ours are secure with the gates and we have another camera on it. But you put them along Gateway Boulevard, some of these people would come around through here, they'll break them.
So.
They'll break them or steal them. Do what? Oh yeah, you install them.
Yeah, you can put them, but we'll, we'll bring them.
Okay, you're bringing, we're bringing that back.
We've got 28.
And the only thing.
About a hundred grand.
So, uh, who's presenting the, uh, the Fort Myers Brewery?
Uh, it's not a presentation. It was just a, uh, information item that it's going for rezoning, but it's 76,000 square feet.
Have they come to us with any plans and what their water and sewer usage is?
They're looking right now at rezoning the property and the property acquisition, but.
No access to Gateways purely off of Daniel Parkway.
We were talking about, we thought it would be pertinent before I was gonna get together with, with staff and go over and look at their organization, walk through the processing and, uh, thought it'd be a good, good, good off, yeah, good, good offsite for us to have to gather some intel.
He was avoiding that issue.
Yeah. And the only thing I was gonna bring up is, uh, on the 22nd next week, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting with the Irrigate. Yeah, and the only other thing I was gonna bring up is, uh, on the twenty-second next week, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting with the irrigation force main and Hawthorne well projects with Tetra Tech that were authorized for design and permitting. And from three to four, we'll be meeting with quality enterprises on the summer force main job. And after that meeting, we'll be flagging the trees that need to be removed, um, and what our replacement plan are gonna be. But when I talked to Matt about it early, what he said, why are you removing the trees? I said, because they're open trenching to install the line and the trees are over the open trench. And I also told them across the street for the bore pit left to take a few out and that, uh, utility infrastructure, including stormwater, doesn't play well with oak trees.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at replacement plans, but there will be some vegetation coming out. So, and that's all I have for today.
All right. Yeah, so, uh, Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Are you good?
A couple cups sweet, uh, we hired Rob Eisner, personal touch to look in the oak trees. I sent that to you.
Yeah.
It's like eight thousand dollars to do a study and he's on evaluating him and Arbust, all of Gateway, basically Boulevard, to look at all the oak trees and all the stuff that affects the utilities, street lights, the whole nine yards, getting outside perspective. And once he gives it to me, I'll have him come do a presentation. He recommended, because there will be trees that have come out. So he suggested highly having a meeting with the public to advise them, this is why.
Can we do this to stop the rumors right off the bat? Give him about a hundred yards of pink ribbon and any tree that he deems has need to come out. Pie a ribbon around it. So people know what we're talking about because the next thing you know, there's gonna be a hundred trees coming out and it might be three.
I haven't stopped receiving emails, uh, for the past two months.
Yeah, same here.
We, we keep saying the same thing.
We put ribbons around trees, they disappear. We had to spray paint them because people remove them.
Spray paint.
Spray paint and put an X on them, but the main thing is make sure that we have what this professional says so that the rumors stop right there.
Well, we'll have him present that when the time comes and.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, no, it was good.
Our Public Works little.
Yeah.
Have you seen that?
Yeah.
Uh, the sidewalk is wrapping up in front of Gateway Greens. Little hurricane kinda slowed us down and we didn't know both, both asphalt plants closed the week of the fourth of July. So instead of increasing the costs so you're not hauling it from Naples and the hurricane hits, so it kinda packed it real nice. We ended up putting almost nine inches of base rock over there.
Wow.
Because that water, the ground was so low, we had to get the elevation up. You got an inch and a half of blacktop.
And it might've been a blessing for that rain to come through because you can actually see the waterfall.
Did and you can see it stand.
The beauty is it did, it packed it down. Plus we knew where the water was standing, so we put additional base rock on that.
Who's gonna be the vendor that comes back now and does the cleanup and the landscaping?
That will be bonus.
Bonus, they're doing it or they subbing it?
They'll, uh, they'll probably sub it out, but.
So there was a point earlier on, um, I don't know if it was Rod or Ed who brought it first, but you know, I think when we're doing those sidewalk assessments, I think we do need to identify what's, you know, what's tree and what's, um, you know, other, so we can have that conversation with the county.
Yeah, Kevin needs to be a plug.
And I don't know if you, if you.
The areas that we did in front of Gateway Greens, Wild Lakes, you, you miles, you just don't even go there with the county because that's all our fault. You got oak trees that buckle that thing up all the way. You can't count the oak trees in that section sidewalk. You got them on both sides of the wall. We got them out by the street. The valley gutter is next, as you're well aware of, needs to be replaced. It wasn't enough funds, probably done at twenty twenty-two. That section loan is about a hundred fifty thousand for that valley gutter to fix. Uh, the reason the oak trees were out from Hidden Links to Stony Brook. Once we fix that, we can give all that to the county because no more trees to buckle that sidewalk. So here you go, county, it's all yours. You just got rid of probably about almost a mile worth of sidewalk. That is the goal to try to do, but it all depends on the trees.
Wait a minute, wait, say that again.
Well, from Hidden Links down to Stony Brook, that section, we took those oak trees out. We have quotes to replace that sidewalk that is tore up. It's all asphalt, which is a lot cheaper.
But is that going to be the county sidewalk or ours?
Well, that's when we'll talk to the county about that.
To me, I'd argue till the sun comes down on that one. Between, uh, Walden and Gateway Greens, wouldn't even dare talk to them because those are trees.
But the oak trees caused the damage to the sidewalks. If you go down through there, every, wherever there's a tree, you'll see a hump where the sidewalk was damaged from it. It's.
So once we repair that, what you're saying is.
Well, it could be shared cost, yeah.
Or once you repair it, then you hand it over to the county and say, here, there's no more oak trees, the sidewalks are yours per the agreement we have with them in our local agreement. That is the goal.
I think what Rodman's point was is that we get seven hundred and fifty thousand plus or minus in there for that item. How much of it is really ours and how much of it's the county? That's the question.
And we can have that discussion with the county and bring them out. It's gonna be a tit for tat, but I'll work on that.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna squeal.
We have pond one twenty-three wrapped up, if you're not aware of it. Of course, ninety-three will be pushed out due to the weather. It's here, the rainy season. Uh, that's pretty much all we had for our end of it. The Flume on Gateway Boulevard, we put that over there by Timber Ridge because that area flooded. Uh, just to knock on wood. The lovely M R I, if you're not aware of it, you had almost eight inches of rain last week, not one road flooded.
Yeah.
All the maintenance we have done has prevented that and stopped that. So they're continuing to go through phase one. We'll be wrapping that up prior about middle of September, then we will start the second phase in October. They are in basin five.
Okay.
Which is from gate.
We're at controlled elevation right now.
Yes, from Gateway Greens to Daniels is pretty much basin five. And we broke that into two parts because how big it was. Then once October, we will start Cameron basin four to see what we have in there. But I know some people are curious about the stormwater budget and reasons so high. Half of that is, is to fix Daniel's preserve.
Authorized, uh, Holmontis to take the next step on what the proposal for fixing, uh, uh, Daniel's preserve.
We have it.
We haven't?
I have.
Oh, we have?
I already got with Rick.
Okay.
We know what's involved.
Great.
But I don't have the money to do it.
Because, because we're at, we're at a danger deal now. We get another, whatever that Edda, Emma, whatever come through, we get another eight inches. We no longer have any place to store it. It goes out on yards.
And the other issue over there is those new apartments will tie into that northern pond and that pond does not flow.
That's correct. And we haven't heard anything back from banks on the engineering of the thirty-two C F S coming from the north.
No, I did get an email from them yesterday. They're putting the calculations together along with the requests for, you know, utility services.
Oh, I can't wait to see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So will you just go really quick with, um, I think it's twenty-four. Oh, it's, it's, it's his, um.
Kenny Hall?
The, yeah, the, uh, the update, the Public Works. It's the one with the pool improvements.
Where he did the, that's the one a whole Montes came up, they're done.
No, no, I was gonna, I just was pointing out one of the pictures. I think you guys did a great job in that landscaping, uh, turning that kiddie pool into a, uh, pool roundabout.
Give kudos to Tim. Tim and Jim did that. I think it looks real good. They did a real good job with it. Tim, Tim and Jim did real good with it. I give both credit to them. They did real good.
Thanks, Brian, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Oh, Brian, I have some stuff for you.
Stay.
I have a lot of stuff here. So I can, I can save it because I know we're behind. I know I have talked to Chris and, and I know you saw tons of email back and forth. Chris, do you think this will be best that we set up a meeting, meet you, Brian, Jim, and go over all of the contract and questions that I have in regards to landscaping? Or you want me to address all of this at the meeting? Because I know we're behind and to be fair, I really wanted to address every single one of those items.
Is that something that you, that you can't sit down with?
I, I would, I would, I would have preferred, because I don't wanna be rushed, but I wanna be respectful of time. I would have preferred to sit down with Chris, Brian and Jim.
Okay.
And if the board allows me.
And then come back to the board if there's items of concern or things that you don't feel like staff is.
Do you wanna, I'm off tomorrow, but you wanna get with me next week? Glad to sit down with you and we'll go over.
Jim is the landscaper manager.
Yeah, I've put out an invitation today to ask when everybody was available next week, including Freddie. Just sit down and talk, same way, same way you do with Glenn.
We can do that, yeah, same thing, not an issue.
Same type format.
Okay, and then the last one is in regards to the Arborist on their contract with the, with the tree trimming. Uh, it does state that we have, anytime that we do any tree trimming, we should have an Arborist on site?
The tree trimming, the done, the Arborist on site, like I say, we have hired Rob Eisner, he is an Arborist. And we have Rob come out and look at it, whether he's on site with his crews do it, I seriously doubt it. I don't think we've ever had that unless it's.
Okay, well, and so that's why I wanna make sure we're not double paying because the current contract that we have.
With.
With personal touch.
With, yeah, with personal touch.
It states that anytime that tree trimming shall take place, an Arborist should be on site.
So specify that personal touch is to supply that Arborist or is that?
It is with personal touch.
They have to supply the Arborist.
Yeah, which.
What I can do is get a list of all his Arborists.
Well, I think the point is, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, if we have a, a contract that says when you're doing tree trimming, that you have an Arborist on site to, for, for oversight, that's one thing.
Yes, that's what it says.
We, I think our contract needs to be very clear if we're, if we're engaging personal touch for additional, uh, what do we call it, like a, just an analysis or a, um, because we're, we're having a look at the trees and.
Opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever, whatever we're calling it. But I think it's, I think it's different. I think one is for an assessment, the other one is for actual work being done and oversight.
Okay.
Well, technically, right now. Pulling it out because definitely wanna make sure. Yeah.
All right, so next week. So that's it. I'll, I'll address all my concerns next weekend.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um, it, let me know if Tetra Tech joins. Okay, uh, utilities, Kenny, you up?
Yeah, we're gonna start with the irrigation. No, the, no, not my agenda item, just the picture.
Right here.
There you go. Go ahead and click it. Okay. Well, what I really wanted to do is just to open, uh, I wanna keep bringing this back up until we get to the first of the year. Um, this chart is what Austin gives me at the end of every month and after we've, uh, reported to Swift Mud, South Florida Water Management District, our numbers. Um, that May number right there, the one that's really gets, should get everybody's attention is the sandstone, seventy-two million. Uh, that's twelve million off of our permit limit, which is eighty-four million. Uh, we have about at maximum capacity or when we're at Thursday night, Saturday night, which are our highest demand nights. Uh, we're pushing about four million gallons total. So that gives us two and a half, three days. That's how close we got this year. Uh, April was a little bit different story and overall our numbers actually are starting to come down. Uh, some of our, our, you know, I wouldn't say restrictions, but we actually went to a lot of the high user communities. Um, and actually met with the cams, the H O A presidents, uh, if we could get them and the landscapers. And we went to there and we had meetings with them and we discussed what we were trying to do and got them all on board and it did have an effect. But following May, uh, we really went to the limit. Very close, we're enough that we're, we're gonna get into some trouble with, uh, South Florida Water Management if we get near that eighty-four million gallons out of the sandstone because that is our allotment. And that represents sixty to seventy percent of our total flow out. So that is a really important number as far as our, our water use permit that we've been issued is. So we are getting right there. And I wanted to just give you a state of what we've done with the irrigation system through all of our projects. Um, we're at ten thousand gallons per minute, which was our goal all along to get us back to where we, the rich system was originally designed for. We've reached that and we are capable of delivering that. Um, with that, we've, we've installed all new variable frequency drives. Um, we've replaced a couple of valves. Uh, we still have a lot more on the irrigation side that we're going to get after. And we've really hit on the education, trying to educate our customers as best we can, uh, when we can get out to them. But we're getting to the point where we, uh, hopefully by, uh, January of this coming year, January twenty-second, for the months of, from January to whenever it starts to rain. In between those, that, those months, we're, we have no issues as far as, we were on the opposite side of where we had demand issues. We no longer have that issue anymore. But from January to whenever it starts to rain, last year it was been middle of May, this year it was almost the middle of June before we really started getting some flows. So we've established watering times. We have them posted. We, we send this information out. We've met with the master meter communities and we've had some good success. But if you look at, if you look at our top five users, Stony Brook is number one. Followed by Hampton Park, Silver Lakes, Magnolia Lakes and Pareto. Daniel's Preserve is, has seen some good reduction, but they, like everybody else, went up in, in May. Um, but those top five communities, especially Stony Brook and Hampton Park are just ripping through the water. And it's, we go and look at the meters and we've got a lot of, of everyday users and we, we wanna get to a point where how we are going to deal with this. Uh, what are we going to do? Because that's what South Florida is gonna come to us. They're gonna say, what are you going to do about it? Um, so we've established days, we've raised the tier rates. I just wanna have that, bring the, bring you up to speed on where we're at. Um, but that sandstone number is, is most likely when K O P Long comes online, Arborwood comes online, or if, when or if Worthington comes online. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be really pushing it.
Question. I'm, I'm really confused on the, uh, tree to F line. Uh, that's twenty-five million gallon, that's less than a million gallon a day and we got a two point two million gallon treatment plant. Where's the water going?
A lot of it, a lot of it, well, if you look at the whole year, COVID messed everything up and, and I wanna point out that Gartner is not there. And when the high schools were awful, when the schools were offline, uh, it really dropped down and we did.
What dropped down? You mean wastewater flow?
Flow, flow in.
What, 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 what did they drop down to?
Oh, twenty-five, we're hitting twenty-five, twenty-fours, twenty-six millions, where in April we went at thirty-one.
Talk about million gallon a day.
Oh, we're probably running about a million a day.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be thirty million, not twenty-five million. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, we went thirty-one million in April.
Okay.
So May, for whatever reason, but one of the biggest things that we've been able to pinpoint is, is Gartner. Gartner is out.
Have we talked to them about what their projections are? Because they're looking at it, that's a six million gallon they plan over there. They're way under capacity and there's talk that they're bringing in all these other customers into that plant. All that water is ours.
Yes, and that was to say, I'm gonna say.
That's got to be advantageous to us such that we take down less out of the sandstone and more out of the.
Yes, and that was, that was what I was gonna finish with. The, the good point is, is that, that community over here.
Timber Creek.
Timber Creek, all that F loan is coming to us. So as that comes online, our, our, our sandstone.
My question is, has they, have they given us a projection so we have an idea of how serious our problem really is? Because if they're gonna bring us a million gallon a day, that's, that's big.
Oh, that's, that's great for us.
If they're not gonna be bringing anywhere near a million gallon a day, then we got a problem.
We just tried to set up that meeting and that was one of my biggest, if not my main topic, is to pin them down on how much are they estimating to come in from that development?
And we, we were one hundred percent positive that they are not backdooring water to anybody. That water is indeed all ours.
Not that we know of, no, no. And then there's the community right across the street from the, the airport, that huge apartment complex they're putting on is coming online. All that F loan is coming to us.
I know it.
Uh, the Gartner building that's not in the district, but on the other side, that's empty. Uh, the airport was empty. I mean, if you look at the twenty to nineteen, twenty and twenty-one numbers, you see where our, our F really went down.
Yeah, I just, before I jump to a conclusion of what we need or how much of a trouble we're in, I'd like to see like a five-year projection of wastewater flow or reclaimed flow that we're gonna be getting to know just how bad.
We tried to pin them down at our last meeting with their, when we meet with all their utilities and they just, they just weren't having it. Uh, so when we set up this meeting, that was one of the main things that we have in mind is telling us how much their estimate is coming into that plant because they have to for, when they hit their triggers to start expanding. So at that meeting coming up, we're really gonna go after them to see what, you know, what, what their estimate is for that community at full buildout, how much water they're gonna be bringing to our, and that's all ours. So I guess they say that'll, that'll balance itself out. Um, we're just looking to start the conversation on what we're going to do with the seven-day water, the five-day watering. Um, and say the majority of it, I won't say the majority of it, uh, the first three biggest users are single-family home. Stony Brook, Hampton Park, Silver Lakes. That's where it's all, uh, for, on the, on the, uh, resident side. Uh, on the master meter community, Pareto and Magnolia Lakes. And again, we met with all of these, with, with these HOAs and with their cams and we, um, went through in some of the communities and changed their times.
Now, wait a minute, are you talking about common area usage or single-family home usage?
Single-family home usage.
Okay, so it's actually the homes?
Don't. Yes.
What are you guys doing up there? That's me. Must have some damn green grass.
Yeah, yeah. Eighteen million was in Stony Brook this, uh, for, um.
I thought my people were bad. They didn't even make the top five.
No, um.
We gotta fill up the pond somehow.
Right? So I just wanted to, to, at the end of the year, now we're in the rainy season, now we're back to, we're gonna be begging people to to water again. So, and I wanted to present a, uh, if this plan works out and this, I'm not gonna go very far with this because. That, this picture here represents our entire irrigation distribution system. And if you go to the next picture, we cut it in half. Now, we did leak over Matarita, Casella, uh, Pinewood Lakes. And a chunk of Timber Ridge. These numbers reached parity. We're we're real close on the, we call the the blue side, the north side, the green side, the south side. On the north side, with those added, we hit two thousand three hundred ninety-eight connections. On the south side, twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and twenty-six. So we're right in between there. Now, we might have to jostle this around. But what we want to do, before I really go into detail, is to model this, just send this to Tetra Tech and have them model it. So if this would work out, we would have, say, the blue side, the north side, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And we could, we have six points where we could shut off the valves to the south side. And Monday, Wednesday and Friday would be the north side's watering days. Valve the other side off, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And then we could, we could rotate Sundays around. You could say Sunday is not gonna be the watering day. We're just gonna build water. Nobody's watering. Or you can alternate it.
Why is, why is Matarita and Casella blue?
That's because that, that brings us these numbers into. Almost, almost to the point.
Oh, you're doing a balancing.
Right, we're trying to balance it out. Now, that might have to change a lot. I mean, we could go through and find with the critical spots. Install new valves in-house, in staff, and then we we would have, uh, working valves.
Are Matarita and Casella, uh, on master meter?
No, Matarita is, Casella is not. Okay, so Casella is hooked into the main, into the irrigation coming into that community. Pareto's on its own line, Passo is on its own line. So those two communities would be involved in the north side, as would Timber Ridge. But if this works, this is to me, from from the, from a management point of view, perfect. Cause we've got, you got three days, you got three days, and then you can alternate the Sunday or just say Sunday's a non-watering day. But if this works, uh, we have to, I want to give Tetra Tech, you know, three to four months of reliable, good data. Where we can go out and pressure test everything, give them the data, run it through the model, and then see if this is feasible. Where I'm concerned is, is can Daniels Preserve, if two-hundred-and-nineteen homes turn on Monday, Wednesday and Friday? Can that line support them? Or Magnolia Lakes or Pareto, uh, they're on alternating schedules, so they're not all on. But if you look at the numbers, they're already, they're already doing that anyway.
We already told Worthington in that very first meeting that you're not hooking on to Daniels Preserve's irrigation. We can't, we can't handle that water.
Yeah, and I.
They're gonna have to figure a way to connect to a bigger pipe.
Right, and if that twelve-inch force main for the irrigation or the twelve-inch irrigation main goes up the FPL easement, it makes it even easier for us.
That's what I said, go up the FPL easement.
Right, yeah, and that, 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 that I think is their, is their, is their best bet. But we have planned that twelve-inch irrigation main going up the FPL easement, uh, if that's, it goes through, that's gonna make it even better for us. So this on face value, and the way the numbers worked out, would work. And it would, it would solve a lot of problems, maintenance-wise, electrical-wise, you could run, you probably only need to run three pumps then. Two pumps are resting, you alternate them around. It would work really, really well for our community. Um, but I'm just not sure how these master meter communities are set up or what's gonna happen in Stony Brook if seven-hundred and, seven-hundred people turn the water on.
Yeah, well, that's, I guess we'll just have to wait and see what the modeling comes back.
The modeling would have to, uh, this is the next step, but this is a, this is a, this is feasible. This could work. And we would have to go in and I would say, put through our own staff and put new irrigation meters that we know work. In there and then go from that, from that point on. And that was, that was pretty much where I wanted to go with this. Um, we can jump into the, uh. Sewer side. Um, I did, I did do a couple of pictures just because I wanted to, uh. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, show the board, that's your standard two, uh, six-inch sewer cleanout. Um. This is what it is, right here. So if you all don't know, this is what it is. This is a single-service lateral, four-inch to four-inch. Four-inch line comes in, four-inch line goes out to sanitary sewer, two fours into a six.
We have four or six coming off me?
It depends. If it's a single service, a lot of them are four-inch. They go four-inch right in. Some of them are. I mean, it it all depends.
But typically, what, what's, I I read this and I'm trying to figure out, what's this all about? Typically, uh, where the six-inch line stops at the property converts to the four, that's the line of demarcation. It's usually the right-of-way line. Where you have duals, where it hits that valve, you just add the splitter, that deep, uh, demarks the, uh, or, uh. Sets aside the two, whether it's private or us.
Yes.
What's the problem?
Uh, the problem is.
People that are saying it's ours? I mean, if it's on one side at that point or on the other side, it's, to me, it's.
And then you want, can you flip the, flip the, to the next picture?
What do they not understand?
This one is a, this one is a, is, this is an odd one here. This is the only one I've found so far. That's a storm drain. When you have a storm drain, they split the two. It'll be four inches, four inches on each side. This one here has a water meter on one side and a sewer cleanout on the other side. That line represents that we measured is the utility easement. If you see the water meter, it's kind of hard to see in the picture, the water meter runs right up to that line. If you look at the sewer cleanout, it's about three foot ahead of that line. Um, so that's, that's your standard split right there with, because of the storm drain. You wanna flip to the next one? This actually happened to us in Gateway Greens. This was in Callaway Greens. If you look at this one. There's the picture, there's the, we we put in the lines. The sewer laterals come down, right down the middle of the driveway, turn ninety. In about four feet into the easement, run straight across, drop into a sewer cleanout that is not there.
We ran into this when we were doing the.
The contractors were initially taking care of this.
Comcast, we, we ran the line right into the pipe.
Both of them, hit both of them there. There, there's two X's on there that, that denote where that line was hit.
And Kenny, for clarification, where that T is, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a cleanout, it's just a lateral. It's just. And then you had the lateral connecting to the, to force main.
So if there's an issue, you gotta board out and break through it.
Well, if if there's an issue on our side, we're, we, we have to go in there and dig that out.
T at Callaway was right under a huge, uh, bush. Big, big old bush.
And there's no, and there's, there's really no way for us to verify it, other than to go up and both of their cleanouts on these houses are right next to their front door. So we've got a couple of guys up there dropping a camera into their line.
That's what we do.
And trying to figure out, you know, and then we get into the who's, who's is it? Is it ours? Is it yours? And when you don't have a cleanout. You, you really have to camera it. And if it's full of sewage, you can't see anything. All you just see is, is water.
Yeah, and then the rule, the district's rule talks about point of delivery. And so, uh, the upstream connection is at the cleanout, you know, which is add or about the public right-of-way or utilities. But in these cases, there is no cleanout. And the rule says the point of delivery is at the wastewater lateral connection to the wife wastewater main of the district. So arguably, it's that bottom portion of that lateral is at the main, the force main?
Sewer, well, the sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer, then that point forward is the property owner's responsibility, not the district's. That's what I think what Kenny was running into, and that's why he and I have chatted for a while.
And we run into it with this one with the contractor. We don't know where the lines are. Um, if you want to flip to the next page.
By the way, Kenny has not shared these with me. He was very good about a whole bunch of other information, but I think.
Well, this is just clarification. I wanted to get a clearer picture of what, what we're, and here, the same thing with Stony Brook. The, the sidewalk, the meter boxes are, are, it, it looks like it's not, they're actually two feet to the center of those meter boxes. And if you go and looked at the other picture, the sanitary sewer connection, the six-inch square, six-inch cleanout is embedded in the sidewalk. So you get into these, and this is a mixed batch. I mean, we've, we went through Timber Ridge here this morning. And we would find sewer cleanouts two feet off the curb, eight feet off the curb, seven feet off the curb, ten feet off the curb. I mean, it's, it's all over the place. And what happens? And what happens is, is if it's not a contractor hit, they get a clog, plumber comes out there, it's the district's fault. No matter what, it always comes back to us. Sometimes they're right, eight out of ten times they're wrong. But we get into this, it's, it's a lateral, it's in the easement, it's your, it's your problem, and then you didn't locate it. So you get into this whole gray area here of who owns these four-inch sewer laterals? That are in the easement is what, where we wanted to go with this, if you want to go to the next one. Um, that drawing right there, nine, uh, it's nine-point-three. If you look at the cleanout, property line is right in front of that cleanout. Property line, uh, right-of-way, this side, that side. Uh, in that picture, it's cut and dry. In our situations, it's usually never cut and dry. Um, let me go to the next one. And that's the shop drawing. There you go, Tony.
I'm not aware of any place in Gateway Greens where there is a cleanout at, at the conversion line. I'm not aware of one.
The one all the way in the back, the one all the way in the back is, is your best bet in Gateway, instead of the newer community.
Hidden links?
Didn't Cypress Links, Hidden Links?
Hidden links.
The one that's all the way in the back. They all have cleanouts. They're all, pretty much all uniform, but all the rest of them are just.
But you're not talking about the cleanout two feet off the house foundation. You're talking about.
I'm talking about our cleanout, where we leave it.
Or, or not, not necessarily, but where the, like in this diagram here. Where you get the four-inch coming into, and it comes into another four-inch line, and they meet. And then the, then the, at the junction, then you have a six-inch line going into the, into the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, so they, a six Y with a six-inch service line and it goes to a four-inch usually.
And under the district's rule, the definition of point of delivery, the. Portion that's upstream of that connection to the sanitary sewer, that's the property owner's responsibility.
Under the pavement?
For any clogs, repairs, yeah. I mean, it says in the absence of cleanout, the point of delivery is at the wastewater lateral connection to the wastewater main of the district. I'm just reading the definition.
You go to, you go to take all the cul-de-sacs we've got. You have it, all of them terminate in the manhole. And outside that manhole, our lines is served basically five houses on the cul-de-sac. Which means every one of those have a radius that goes across thirty-six feet of pavement. Hit the curb line, go up, and then the connection is made when the house is built. I don't go out to the sewer and hook on. I hook up at the point that the CDD delivered the sewer to my property.
If there is a cleanout there, that's different.
No, I'm talking about when, what they did when they built it, is they ran a six-inch service line out of the manhole. Or out of a Y in front of the manhole, and it terminated with a capped line at my property line. The only reason I know about this is because mine backed up two days after I moved in. Concrete truck ran over it. We dug down and we found where the cut line, the service line was delivered and it was capped off. My contractor came in, took off the cap, ran it on up to my house. I'll argue till the cows come home. That's the diff, uh, the, the dividing line between us and the association. Everybody I've ever worked in forty years has that way. Owners do not go out in the street and incur cost of a service line. No way.
There, there might be, need to be a clarification of the rule, and I think that's part of what Kenny was saying, that because once again, the definition of point of delivery.
Yeah, our biggest thing is we need to be consistent on how we do it.
Yes, I think that's Kenny's concern.
And some of these.
Need to fill in this gray area, so when we get into these, uh, and it comes, it comes back to locate, it's locate everything within the utility easement. We don't know where it's at. We know there's, there's a four-inch lateral going across there somewhere, and when they hit it, it's, it's not located.
The problem we ran into them with Comcast, uh, and the subs had some arguments, and it puts us in a, us, the CDD in a bad position. We got to go out there and locate these things and give them an idea. Our best bet is just take a lot of cans of spray paint. And cover our backsides by spraying basically everything. But to go out there and say at Callaway Greens, what we saw happened, to say that you would have predicted that's what happened, I'd have never done it. I would have never said they came across, then did that long T and went into those houses. I would have never done that. I would have never marked it that away for Comcast. So what it does, it puts us on exposure, because the first thing they come in and say is, you didn't properly mark it.
Yeah, I think, I think what's important is, again, the definition of point of delivery, it says the point where the district pipes are connected with the pipes of the consumer. Then it says unless otherwise indicated. So it depends on what the plans say. That's, that's what's critical.
You gotta fall back.
And that's the difficulty though, Kenny, right?
Yes.
And the plans don't say it necessarily.
They don't show us.
Callaway, on that one that he showed, I'll bet you, it, it came over and it did one of these, right there. It didn't go down thirty feet both directions. See, that, that's, that's a real problem. That is a nightmarish problem because our staff, there is no way in the world. You can second guess that going out in the field and do it locations.
Right.
Alright, so let, you know, let's.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll bring this back to the board with some requests for clarification. And then again, the key is, unless otherwise indicated, the point of delivery is at the upstream connection of the cleanout. No cleanout, it's at the connection to the wastewater main. And so that's, we may need to look at what's in the field versus what's in the rule.
It, it's, the biggest area of concern is, is the ones that we do not have a sewer cleanout. There is no sewer clean, it's there, it's just six feet underground. And you can kind of, you can, you can, and if you're looking at it from a camera point of view, like we look at it. You go white schedule forty.
We're, we're spending too much time engineering on this.
Okay, I agree. Alright, so if there's anything we need to bring back.
Uh, and I think it was important Kenny wanted to make the board aware.
Yeah, no.
This is a real, it's a mess.
Steven, are you on now? I think you have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, uh, district engineer.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, real quick, we've got three items on the agenda. Two are letters from Danny regarding, uh, bonds. They're pretty much standard. We do them every year. It's just a typical letter thing. You know, the knowledge over the year, we looked at all these, you know, facilities and everything's good to go. Uh, the next is a status update. Um, there's nothing too groundbreaking, so I don't want to take up any more of your precious time this evening. So unless you guys have questions, that, that's it for me.
Anything for, uh, district engineer? Do we have to make any approvals of the trust and venture documents? Or just acknowledge that we've got the report?
I think acknowledged, I think it's just a requirement of venture that the engineer provides.
Yeah, I've got one question for, uh, Steven.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I, I saw a couple change order requests on the boardwalk, uh. Refurbishment in Pelican. Who's approving this? Who's approving those?
So they're gonna go through the engineer. Um, I haven't seen them yet.
Is that you?
But, no, Foster is the engineer of record, so they'll pull that through.
So it goes to him.
Follow up with them and see where that's at.
Well, I certainly don't want him spending, Foster spending any board money without us or Pelican money. Without P-PAC and or us approving it.
Understood. I'll reach out to him tomorrow and see what's going on.
And I brought that discussion up with Mr. Measy, but some of those change orders, uh, if, if that work is when they have. Um, piling off or they're working on it, waiting for a once-a-month P-PAC meeting is somewhat problematic. And so far, on that million-dollar contract, we have a total of five thousand dollars in change orders, so it hasn't been significant.
Okay, well, you, you know, my concern is if, if nobody's looking. That's why I wanted to know what the organizational structure was. I think, I don't know whether it's P-PAC and they've got a representative in the conservation areas in Doug Xanter. Or whether it is Castle Management, but I want to make sure somebody, and I understand the timeliness, even if it's gotta go through you, Chris. Somebody needs to be looking at what Foster's doing. I just don't trust them.
Yeah, they're, uh, those change orders come from the contractor, then Foster has to sign off on them, and then they come to me. And I, I make P-PAC aware of them.
Okay, and I would like to be on copy of anything to do with the boardwalk increases. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else for, uh, Steven? Okay, uh, we will move on to our action items. Uh, so we'll start with four A.
It's okay if I just do it from here?
Sure.
Okay, um, I'd like to bring this agenda item before the board. Um, as I, we've discussed previously, Tetra Tech's contract is up. At the end of September of this year, and there is no auto renew, uh, built into that contract. So we'll need to put it out, uh, for the CCNA process, and we would like to take a different approach. Um, this time when we do the bidding, I realize we do need to have the district engineers, so we'd like to do one RFP. To have, uh, for the district engineer, and then do a separate RFP to develop a pool of engineers. Who would be able to service all the different kinds of projects that we're having. So instead of having subs through Tetra Tech, we could go right to those engineers. Depending on what types of projects we're gonna be doing. It would go with some flexibility. And by, I being able to identify the projects we're planning to do over the next, I'm assuming it would be a three-year contract. The next three years, um, we wouldn't have to do, and Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, the CCNA process, because we'd be able to put all that in our RFP. We can just say, hey, we want to start this project now. Do you want to do it? And so it'll, it'll save us some time on the backend as well.
Well, if you want to do that, uh, I, I won't have any problem on surveying and geotech work. But otherwise, uh, I do not want to do this on a pool of engineers. I want one engineer that we deal with. First of all, task orders that we're doing, two, three thousand dollars, no engineer's gonna touch that for three thousand dollars. Uh, they're gonna, their, their internal costs are gonna be more than the three thousand dollars. That's, that's a waste of time. My deal would be going ahead and extend contract for Tetra Tech for one year. And if you want to have a, uh, RFP for non, uh, uh. And if you want to have a, uh, RFP for non, uh, tasks done by, uh, that, let's say Tetra Tech doesn't do, which in the last two years I've reviewed have only been two kinds, surveying and geotech. Uh, I, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill, but I don't think we need to do it.
Ed, I, I totally agree. And is there any way, Tony, that we, you know, does it have to be in the contract clause to just renew them year after year? I mean, we just went out for bids, it seemed like yesterday.
I, I, I don't, I have not yet, I did not re-review the Tetra Tech contract. We might just be able to amend it and extend it for one more year.
That's exactly what I'm proposing.
And then as far as the other RFP, uh, I can work with the board's wishes, I can work with Laura to book up the RFP, for both surveying and geotech, and there might be some others. And you may want to also do one for planners of, you know.
West on engineering.
Or mappers, mappers. I'm, I'm saying like surveyors or mappers, uh, outside engineering, trying to, and landscape architects, you may want to have those, those four categories.
You wanna do those, I don't have any problem.
Because those are in the category of requires CCNA.
I agree with that. Do we need a motion to just extend them for a year?
Yeah.
If we do, I like it.
Are we that the areas that staff is thinking, um, that that's the same areas that we'll need in six months or, or a year from now? I just want to make sure when I go through an RFP, we're identifying a preferred pool of, of vendors. And then we get six months down the road and we find something that we, that's outside of that, and we gotta go through the, the process. So I'm trying to figure out what we're trying to solve.
Seems like a waste of time, effort.
That falls under this category.
Well, there's a difference, and I think the difference is, you have the typical bidding concept for services and contracts and construction. And that's a separate statutory scheme. Those are actually bids, or requests for proposals. When you're talking about the CCNA, they are, you're requesting proposals with no costs. And then you have to rank and negotiate with the top-ranked firms, and then you have the ability to enter into a contract. And that's when you discuss compensation. That's more time-consuming because of the notice requirement. So there's a category of professional services, landscape architects, architects, engineers, surveyors, mappers.
But what you can do is go through and pre-qualify the firms that you will send the RFPs to later on.
We're, no, okay.
And you can do that.
If we're talking about outside professional services, we're talking contractors or?
I'm talking about professional services. We're not, we're not selecting the firm. We're selecting a group of firms that are in a pool that then when we have a job, because right now, you can't go to one.
It's a preferred vendor list, basically.
It's a preferred vendor list. Yes.
I, I think you would need to go through the CCNA process. What I have seen in other communities, in Kyra County just recently did it.
There's quite a few other ones that we discussed when I was in my, my district manager training class. There was, there was other counties that do this as well.
Kyra County did it recently, where they did, they requested to get, it's a more larger, so much our drop operation. But they actually went to the CCNA and had contracts, and the contracts had rates and schedules for the fees for those types of services, for unique engineering services and/or landscape architect services and/or.
Until you know the scope, you can have all the rates and charges you want, but you've got to apply man-hours to it to make a number. How do you do that if you don't know what the job is? I mean, that's, that's, can't do it.
Again, I can, what I can do, I can get with, and Laura, I can retrieve some of the, uh, the documents from the CCNA requests for Kyra County when it did the engineers and.
I pulled some from Lee County as well.
And just show you the examples we can discuss.
I just think that's premature. At this point in time, I'd rather have Tetra Tech in here, extend their contract one year, and then if we want to follow up and do some other type of system, a vendor list, or whatever you want to call it, on services that they do not provide, that's a whole different ball.
And so what I would ask, so I don't, uh, I don't disagree with the, um, extension per year. I would kick that back to staff and say, are there any augmentation or any changes that we would like to make to the contract? Because I, I don't want us to get to a motion and vote without giving staff the ability to make.
If we're gonna amend it, we can make some changes possibly, is what you're saying.
So I think we would probably.
Is it fair to say that the board's not necessarily interested in, in not having Tetra Tech represented the way they have for the last ten years that I've been involved? Because that's my sentiment.
I have no problem with Tetra Tech, uh, but I also want to make sure that if staff has the ability to engage specialists in some cer- certain areas, or if there's opportunity for, you know, for whatever, that we at least give them the ability to do that, so.
And if Tetra Tech says they can't handle something, or don't have the area of expertise and want to do it, I totally agree with that.
Let's, let's have them just give us a, uh, an amendment or a proposed amendment to their contract for an extension of one year. And then if it comes back and we have things that staff or somebody thinks needs to be added, we can hit it when we see the amendments to the agreement. We don't have a lot of time. We only have about sixty days.
Yeah, so why don't we, if, if I could get a motion to have staff work with Tetra Tech on, on a contract renewal, uh, for.
Extension.
I'm sorry, extension, for one year. Um, that's, that's item one, so I'd like to go do that.
I'd make that motion right now.
And I second.
Motion is second. Uh, any other discussion?
Yeah, if I can make a comment, I think really what we're looking at is, um, we, we're, we're using whole monties for the emergency access road, and we're using them for recreation planning. If the amounts were up, we'd have to go through the CCNA process to hire some people to do that. Same with surveying, and you could call it that, but you're just pre-qualifying a group of professionals through CCNA. So if you want to pick them and use them, you can say, well, they're already on the list. They went through the process.
Yeah, and we're not shooting that down. I think the first motion that's out there is we're gonna, let's do the contract extension, and then I would imagine there'd be a second motion for staff to work with Tony on the, the second component, which is creating, you know, this, whatever.
Without belaboring the discussion, why didn't Tetra Tech get the shot at the, uh, the road? I understand the park. But why, why didn't Tetra Tech get a shot at doing what we're doing on the road?
I would say why they do utility work, paving and road base isn't their forte.
Did they say they didn't want it? I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and then the second motion would be for the district manager work with Tony on the, what are we calling it?
Well, I guess I would suggest that it just work on the process in order to have a pool of professional services firms available for scope of work outside the realm of the scope of work that Tetra Tech can provide.
I'll make that motion.
Go a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion case. Great. Good with that. Uh, the item four B, force, force main relocation contract.
The consultant, oops, sorry, consultant selection and, uh, was approved and reviewed by the board. And from the bid specifications, we just brought back the contract and all the necessary documents, including the bid bonds and the insurance, um, to move forward. Um, asking that contract be approved and authorized the, her to sign it. And then we'll issue the notice to proceed and get started on the summer force main project.
I'll make that motion to, uh, award the contract quality, give the prices USA.
I'll second your motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Chris, what they, I was looking at.
Doug, Doug, I gotta go, excuse me, Ed, but I gotta sign off. So unless there's something really hot now.
About a tree going, why are we, other than maybe a bore pit, why would we have any trees that would have to go out?
Well, we have the seven palms coming down in front of the pump station, uh, because of the open cut of the line, and you know, you have the irrigation.
I, I was looking, I don't count palms. I was looking at. And there's those seem to be the ones that everybody's got to.
And there, there's two other oaks and a smaller oak in the line going down Griffin. But again, you have the reclaim line on one side and the potable water line on the other, and the only place to go is where the trees are.
And, and that oak is gonna come out anyways with the round valve.
Uh, probably. It's, I think they're further up.
Close, yeah.
But there's gonna be trees coming out on that round valve.
Yeah, oh yeah, there will be, but, and we're looking at replacement planning right now, um, you know, for that area, so.
Um. Yeah. Yeah. No, and what I would say regarding budget, we know everyone's sensitive. I think when we get responses, again, we just need to keep reminding residents, this, this budget was the high watermark. It was based on items, all the items, we deem critical and priority on some level. The discussion's gonna be, what do we need to do now versus two, three years? Um, and what's gonna be palatable, and probably more importantly, what's our funding options in order to reduce the assessments? I would just challenge staff to, now's the time for us to go back. Um, and, you know, sharpen our pencils and, and determine what can we, what can we put off to next year, what are, what are absolutely critical for this year? Because we will have to go down. I mean, that's just.
What's in the paper?
Along the lines, that's the head that will be in the paper this weekend, what's required by the Florida statutes whenever you have any piece of assessment.
And, and I'll put up a clubhouse.
The, 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 the thing that I think that happened on this one, and, and again, this deal that you put out and it got circulated around, uh, I wasn't joking, well, earlier, this is something the community needed to hear. They may not wanted to hear it, they may have never wanted to hear it, but they needed to know, we're trying to run this thing and run it right. Now, are there options to avoid this thing going to thirteen hundred? I'll be the first to vote against going to thirteen hundred. But we go to a twenty-year, because I think Rod's dead on point, and I think somebody said that we got the interest rate from the bank.
Correct, for the twenty and the five.
Two point seven four.
Two point seven six for the twenty and two point five four.
Our deal is, to me, is we should be immediately, concurrently going to the bond validation. So we lose, don't lose any time, because people I've talked to that have done some checking on it, it looks like that that six months is probably real to make it happen. We don't have to do this stuff in two months. We can wait six months. But boy, at the end of six months, I'd want to be able to have, if, when this is behind us, that we can fire on all cylinders. Because one of the advantages of doing it this way, and we've talked about it, is you're gonna get much better bids when you go out and do this work in, en masse than you do in picking. And then somebody else said, well, why can't we extend it out? That's another issue. I've got a lot of residents in my community that are matter than hell, that they have for years been paying these surcharges on the principal interest on these SRF projects, and they ain't had one in their yard. And they want theirs, and they're saying, hey, five years, six years is enough. When's my turn? With this, we can do it.
Well, I mean, even, even if you look at, let's say, the five and a half million that, you know, the staff came up with, our capital items that we can include in this, and let's just include the five and a half million for the park, just hypothetically, you round that up, let's say that's twelve million. You're, you're really only looking at about a hundred dollars, maybe a hundred and thirty dollars annually on a twenty-year, twelve million dollar.
Well, while we're doing it and, uh, talking to Russ, there's another segment of this, and that's the enterprise side. So I was asking him, do we do one bond validation that handles OO1? And a separate bond validation that handles enterprise?
That has to be that way, yeah.
It has to be. I, I gather it would, it could be both of them merged under one, but you had to have to have the engineering work on both of them separate.
I would suggest to be separate, because you're gonna have two different trust indentures, and you have two different sources of pledged revenues. The enterprise funds would be the utility rates, fees and charges, and so the definition of pledged revenues on the other side would be the assessment, the debt service assessment.
I think we'd probably look and see, is it possible, just because you'll cut your costs.
I have never, I don't know if you want to think you make it more complicated. Well, because, because when the notice goes out and the rule to show cause is gonna have a blend, and it's gonna be very awkward.
Well, here's, here's what I'm thinking, is you've got some water issues, without going into a lot of details. We got some water vulnerability. Where's the money coming from? We don't have anything.
Yeah, and if the board's inclined, what I would suggest is that.
I still don't want to do a five year.
Yeah, what I would suggest is that Chris and I be tasked with getting together with Bond Council, Russ, Tetra Tech, and Laura, whoever is appropriate, to start coming, and then come back to the board in the August meetings and say, here's our team, here's our concept, here's our approach. And then Steven also, of course, so that we can have everything in place from the standpoint of the professionals engaged to do the necessary work when the board says, go do it.
Well, the reason I say to move out on this is because our budget, to be able to reduce that thirteen hundred back down to the number that you recalculated divided by twenty for five million, that is a significant drop. I don't know, somebody said six hundred and seventy dollars may go up eight, nine, ten percent. I think we'll be happier in the.
I mean, we stay, we stay low double digits, it's a win.
I think we're gonna go, we're gonna be somewhere between eight twenty-five and eight fifty by my calculation.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying is, because we all know we need an engineer's report, we need an assessment methodology, and all those need to be in place to be ready to fire off and file the petition, I mean, the complaint.
Yeah, because we're, we're doing a rate budget and approval based on numbers that assumes this happens.
Yeah.
So we need to get that behind us, in my opinion.
And just as reminders too, so physically, you're eighteen, uh, we had about eighteen percent increase. Uh, twenty nineteen, we had twenty-five, and there was some contributing factors. I don't remember all of them, but I do remember there's a reason why it was higher. And then twenty twenty, it was nine point eight percent, and then twenty twenty-one, six point six. So other than twenty nineteen, you know, it's, it's been under twenty percent. Uh, last two years has been under ten percent, which I think is remarkable, considering all the stuff that we've accomplished and have done in the last couple of years, so. Uh, so I think we'll get creative. I think this board is not gonna have any problem trimming some fat, coming up with creative funding solutions. I think what's gonna be important is how we communicate what we're doing, why we're doing it, to the community, so they, so they understand. There, so what, let's go to the agenda. Um, anything else from a budgeting perspective?
No, we'll, we'll work and bring, uh, bring back those loan terms and how it'll reduce some cuts for the meeting August fifth.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Um, anything to pull on consent, consent items A through C?
Right now.
No.
Have a motion approved?
Absolutely.
My second.
Have a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, supervisor comments? Uh, I know Bob left, so it's just us three. Bob, y'all starting on the year end.
Uh, Chris? Going there.
I sent the invitation out for that landscaping meeting today, asked everybody to respond, so.
Alright, so, uh, any updates on the pond standards? Because I think it's, it's overdue.
Oh yeah, the consultant, I wish Brian was here, because I, it should be done by now.
Yeah, it's overdue.
Way overdue.
I'll, I'll.
So can we make sure that's on the next agenda item?
I was gonna say, can we do a, a list on this one? Because my list is like getting huge on. That one, and then also with aquagenics, I did go back and I don't think, um, the Latoral bins, twelve, I mean, it just needs to be done. The, the spraying. I know Bob mentioned something about Silver Lakes. I think he just had, I think he just had the, the pond confused. That one was not twenty, but.
Yeah, the water's up so high right now, there's.
It's, it's been two years. I, you know, two years ago, I was like, it's not that bad. Now it's been two years. It needs to be done.
Which ponds are you talking about?
All of them.
All of them.
Because it's been two years, so he hadn't, Aquagenics had plenty of time to catch up.
Oh, I totally agree.
That's just, and, and if they're not, then do we need to now look at the contract and get another vendor, have the work done and subtract the money out? Because that's what the contract.
Yeah, you're talking about specifically the width of the.
The width of the, that's it, yep.
And we shouldn't be having that conversation anymore, to be quite honest.
Because it's two years, so that's, that's.
To be quite honest, we should not be talking about tour growth outside of the eight, ten, what was it? Uh, ten feet?
Yeah.
Twelve.
It shifts depending on the DO, but yeah.
That's a visual thing that.
Twelve, I was willing to sell for twelve passes. It's been two years, and if they cannot, and then I'll say whatever the contract says, if it's, if it's thirty days, at this point, because it's been two years, and if it's eighty ponds, I no longer care. I no longer care. They can't, don't have the, the enough manpower. I no longer care.
Their problem.
Their problem, their logistics, hire somebody else, deduct from their contract. We just need it done. Um, so that, those are the two things within the ponds that follow up. Um.
Along those lines, I think the contract does provide that if the district gives a notice of default, and they don't do the work within a requisite period of time, the district can use its own, hire somebody else and deduct it. I think it's.
I thought we had some penalties in there.
That's what I want to look into, is what, what penalties.
I think it might be, and I think, I recall, I think we tried to make that standard in most contracts, that we give them a cure period. If they don't do it, we can do it.
They have thirty days.
The landscaping is seven, which I love, so I don't know what the aquogenic ones is. But, um, if we can look at that, and then I do, I do recall saying it has to be formal written. So, and I think that's our problem, because every time that I reach out to staff, it's, we told them. And then I say, well, shh, send me the email, and there is never a written, and that's my frustration. So if that can be in writing to.
Anytime we have an escalation, if it's not in writing, someone's not doing their job. And then, you know, Chris, you should be copying on it, the department head, and to be quite honest, you can start copying me on any, any potential breach or.
We need to be checking these people.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm tired of having conversations around our vendors that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, because we're not.
Making them do it.
We're not making them do it, uh, and we're not documenting it. I mean, it's just, at, at some point, we have to put our foot down, so. That, that time is now.
That. Uh, Tony, just for your follow-up, I'm trying to go in order. Uh, any updates on the letters that needed to go to the HOAs for the homeowners that were encroaching and also spraying, removing Latorals?
Got a copy of it today.
He read, read Liger's old words.
Before he went on vacation and it came, it was in the brush.
He read, read Liger's old words before he went on vacation and he was in a rush to get me out.
Now, post vacation, Tony was, was enlightened and wanted to make changes.
All right, so that's all I have for the pond, the ponds part. And then in regards to landscaping, I will save you guys, but I'm beyond disappointed. And it has to do with the contract, and it has to do mainly with staff. And I do wanna bring this board aware of it, that I have been for the last month or so requesting items from staff that I had a conversation with Chris, I, point blank, I said, is it for a particular reason that I'm not being given this documentation? Do I need to do a public's request, cause I'll do so? Am I not asking the right question? Am I not, is it the tone that I'm not giving it right? Because my understanding is that the staff need, the staff's job is to hold, you know, is to, to look at the contract and hold the vendor accountable. And they're not doing it, so I'm doing it for them, and then they're getting upset about it. Sorry, not my problem. So now they're getting upset, because I'm nagging every week, asking over and over for this thing, this item. To the point that if you ask me about the landscape contract, I can probably regurgitate it to you, because I write so much. So it's coming on next week for landscaping. It's, it's significant.
You know what she's talking about.
Yeah, we heard I had a couple of conversations, that's why I set the meeting up for next week, that we're gonna sit down, four of us, including a representative from Mainscape. Flavia has about thirty-two sticky notes in the contract that she has some pertinent questions about. And I said, well, we'll go through each one and.
My deal, my deal's, it's two sided. Not only I'm going to Mainscape, I'm going to staff, that's why in the hell is you allowed to happen?
Exactly.
And what I would, what I would encourage is before you pull Mainscape in, Flavia, I would have you sit down with Chris and staff. Let's walk through your concerns of the contract to make sure that you're interpreting the contract the way staff is interpreting, just so we're on the same page, cause I don't wanna get in front of our vendor and have, you know, conversations around your, our board interpretation versus staff. So if you guys could do that, get it, get ahead of it first. So when you go into that meeting with Mainscape, it's a unified front and we're on the same page.
Well, we, we are, and what the, what that issue is, is sometime when you get with the vendor, that there may be a different, what we've looked at is, is the staff is interpreting different than the contractor.
So that's why, that's why we need to have those check-in meetings. And I would say, if there are, if there are items that you guys have discrepancies on, as far as interpretation, let's bring this back to board before we move to Mainscape. Cause I don't want, I don't want to have a meeting, sit down with Mainscape and we have two different interpretations, and then we get into, you know, a confrontation, not a competition, but we, we have some issues. So if you guys are on the same page, everyone agrees, go forward. If not, if you think there's some discrepancies on how staff's interpreting, then we bring it back here and we hammer it out.
And I, and that, that is the reason why I'm asking staff to provide me the reports where they're issuing tickets with concern. So then I can say, well, yes, staff has brought all those issues to Mainscape, Mainscape is not doing. But I'm not getting those reports, so now, do I know that staff is reporting? Cause I can't blame Mainscape for not getting the work done, if staff's not reporting the issue, that's what my.
Available, get it to her. If there's an issue with how we're documenting, that's an internal, you know, system issue, we don't have a process in place, then that's a whole nother conversation, we can have that.
And then the last item I do, did we have any updates? I know I requested from Georgia in regards to Angela's resignation for the, for the Stony Brook Committee. Did we get anything else besides the email from Joe saying that she resigned on June seventeen?
We have not received any formal resignation from, from Angela. So we haven't, we haven't gotten anything. The only thing that Georgia had was just that she told, Angela told them she didn't wanna be on the board anymore, and she would stick around till they could find someone. So there's been no formal, nothing's been formally submitted, nothing's been formally documented or anything.
What's the concern?
So, did you receive the email?
I got one. Oh, yes, yes, okay, I know what you're talking about.
So I guess, so then I guess there's a question, did she resign or she not resign? So, so then she didn't resign, so then we didn't need to appoint.
If she is not, if she has not submitted a resignation to the district, in my opinion, she has not resigned.
Yes, so then there is no need to appoint, so then the.
Correct, no vacancy, in my opinion.
Yeah, we have not received any kind of resignation from her.
Okay, is that, is that something I'm gonna need to make a call or just get confirmation on status?
So then, it's. I think there's three applicants so far for the position for the vacancy. There's three that, at least as of this afternoon, there's three.
So what?
Doug, you may need to.
I'll confirm whether or not there is a resignation on file, and if so, we need a copy of it. And if so, great. If there's not, and if there's a discrepancy, then we need to.
Yes.
Make it black and white, not gray.
Yeah, cause.
She was actually online the first part of the meeting.
I think she's online, she's online now, I think, yeah.
And do we, well, okay, I'll, I'll make a, I'll reach out and see where we're on.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one thing. Chris, this budget deal is coming down real quickly to identifying these items that we've all talked about, that predominantly make up that five million. That's going to set the tone of this budget, in my opinion. I would feel a lot more confident, and I've asked Brian, and I haven't received it. I would like to have each one of those ten or twelve line items that we highlighted that sidewalk, it's a good example, seven hundred and fifty thousand. I have no clue where that number come from. Five hundred thousand for this, million for this, five hundred thousand for this. I'd like to see every one of those enumerated with how was that number calculated? Cause people come up and ask us, what are you talking about a half a million dollars? Well, I, I can't answer it, I don't even know what we're talking about. So I'd like to see facts that back this up and where did the numbers come from? Then, if the numbers are indeed all factual, then our decision is, is can they be phased or our best bet go to twenty years?
A great example of that is, okay, we're, we're, here's the amount of square feet that we have from sidewalks. Okay, well, can we, what's the severity of those areas? Can we split that number in half? So we just need to know, look at some more detailed line items, that makes sense.
I'd like to have a breakdown of those items for which we believe that it's capital related, not operations, capital related, that we can look at, and, cause that's where we gotta home in.
And I, I've seen the figures on the sidewalks.
I asked for it.
Okay.
So what's that?
What do you ask? This is probably like four months ago. So it doesn't have all of it, but Brian has it.
So Brian has it.
Cause I, I had that question, so I was like, how did you come up with the money? So he has one for sidewalks, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's there.
Yeah.
It gotta be based on something, yeah, and it, that, that makes it better for us, especially if we go to a public meeting and somebody asks any one of us, well, what, what's this for? We're pretty stupid when we don't know what the heck it's for.
Quote the square footage.
He had it for the curving, he had, he had it for everything, so.
Yeah, that's all I get.
Okay, we'll, we'll tie it into that line item.
All right, well, overall, I thought this is, I mean, it was a long meeting, but it was good. We're getting good information out, and I, I wanna applaud staff and Laura for getting stuff out there on, on social media. I would say we probably need to add like Nextdoor. Is that what?
I try.
But you can't, cause you're not.
Well, I tried to set up an address, it says I'm outside a gateway.
So again, that's probably.
My address, yeah, right.
And I do agree, we probably, you know, I know it's, so with the survey thing, I think we need probably open it up again.
The pool, yeah.
My, my intention is now that the numbers have been formally presented to the board, I'm gonna do another, I'd like to do another survey and actually tie the numbers in with the, with the stuff. So you and I had worked on the last one, I can put a draft one together and run it by the board, and I want you guys to be comfortable with whatever I send out, and we'll put it right on social media.
I just wanna be cautious that, like, we're, they were building off the information that we have, cause there were a lot of people said, I didn't take the survey. So either we need, either we need to do a phase two, a, a rerun and try to get more information based on what we already had, or if we do two, it's gonna be basically one with additional information. So I don't wanna make sure we're not losing, like, you know, the second survey is so different from the first one that you can't correlate the.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, what I was intending to do was to take basically the results from the first survey and say, like, when we sent out the first round of surveys, twenty-five percent of the respondents said they were interested in this. If we do this, this is what the cost will be. And then, you know, fifteen percent of the people won, were interested in this, if we do this, this is what the cost will be.
Cause a lot of people have asked, what was the breakdown? And tonight, they started to see a several to that with Chrissy's identification. What is the deal next Tuesday? What's, what's the agenda for the?
President's council.
Budget.
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 That's pretty, I, I didn't want anything else.
We better get then those.
There's only about twenty people coming so far, so.
We better get those numbers then from Brian quickly, cause I do not wanna go to that meeting and sit there with my thumb, you know where, and somebody asks a question, you're talking about spending five million, and you don't even know what the hell it's for?
Yeah.
Laura.
Cause I don't, I don't have an idea where, where he's spending all that money.
One, one thing that, at, at least for, for my knowledge, I can tell you that we do not send email blasts if you did not sign up for, if you did not do a consent for electronic notices. So a lot of people, like one gentleman, he was from Magnolia Lakes, and if you didn't sign up, you don't get it, because we comply with seven twenty on that. So maybe if we could reach out to the presidents that are coming, if they can, because they can ask their camp, give us the total amount of residents that sign up for electronic communication, because.
Cause that number's gonna be different.
Because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a total difference. So then we, at the next time when they come and say, look, we didn't get the survey, then we can say, well, we know there's about eight hundred residents of this community, but only three hundred will sign up for it. So we put it back on them to sign, to sign up for it, because I can tell you, I, I mean, right now, it's ninety-five percent of my community, it's signed up for electronic communication, but that is not the case in most communities, so, you know.
And I intend to include the job. Put my microphone back. I intend to include the same thing, where we ask people which community they live in, so that we can see how many responses we're getting from each one that way. If one area is not responding, or if we're not getting as many as we're expecting to see, then we can kinda poke and say, hey, can you please make sure your residents are getting this?
Get out to all these people, but no one can seem to find the survey on the website or.
It's on the Facebook page. I know, I actually know one community in particular, that their board specifically says, no email blast, no matter what it is. And it's, it's more than five hundred homes in this particular community, so they don't get it. So that's why, I'm not gonna call them out, but.
The property management firms are the good ones.
Yeah.
Are very knowledgeable, it's seven twenty states, unless you've got a document, what we call an owner contact information form, as were they, and ours, we have three checks. Do you wanna know about everything? Do you wanna know about financial, or do you wanna know news?
Notice, yeah.
So we, we make them check it off.
Sure.
But the issue is, is that our property manager, when we have the dwelling line for our entrance, we've got the emails of a bunch of people, because we demand to have the emails, so they don't get a transponder.
Yeah.
Our property management firm will not take those emails because they didn't sign their own owner contact information form. So consequently, we do a blast, we have two types of blasts. One that is management-related blast, and one that's HOA-related blast that they aren't involved in.
We did send, we did send that email out to the HOA presidents as well. It did not just go to the cams, it went to, it went to anybody that would possibly have a resident database of emails.
Just what I heard tonight, there was as many as eight hundred homes that were in those ones that were mentioned that didn't get this, that didn't know anything about it.
Well, and, you know, let's just assume that, well, we can assume either it didn't get out to them, or they just didn't get it, so.
How many is in our database? I know Leslie told us, cause I wanna know.
I don't have access to that, so she would know.
I, I got it from Gateway Greens, it's not very good.
Yeah, I don't think, it would just be people that have utility billing that we send out that way, yeah, and I, I wouldn't know, I don't have access to that. But I, I think the fact that everybody's been so vocal and people are paying attention now on the social media, I think in, in the board brings it up, and we keep talking about the survey, I think if we send it out and then I put it on the Facebook page, I think that we'll get good response.
Let's say Billy Bob in one of the additions, that he didn't get it for whatever reason. How can he contact this office and get it? Do we have a place he could come here to get it and fill it out?
A survey?
Yes.
It's not on paper, I will not, except paper is gonna be a nightmare. So that's why I said I can put the link on the Facebook page, and they can go to our Facebook page, click on it and go take it. They just gotta have a phone computer, whatever.
So we've got two things here. One, I think we can have that survey remain open indefinitely. And then you can do your second survey, and then what we do is, at critical points, we would go back and cross-reference the survey at that point in time. So, okay, has there been any major changes? At least people, we're always given an avenue to fill the survey out, fill the survey out, fill the survey. Now, it's not gonna stop us from moving forward, based on the information we have available today. But as we get closer to different, you know, milestones in the design process, we can go back to that survey and say, okay, now Pavilion has changed from twenty percent up to twenty-seven percent. Okay, great, our participation rate has gone from blah, blah, blah. So at the end, when we go to final design, we say, okay, at this point, we have thirty-five percent dissipation. Does that, does the percentages match and align with our final, you know, product? So I think it works. I think we keep the survey open, and then you could even.
Yeah, I did, I did close it just so that it wouldn't cloud my, my results, yeah. I could reopen it, yeah, I can reopen it.
Access by going to our website.
Facebook, Facebook page.
Facebook page.
Yes.
Can I put, when is the next building cycle rolled out?
It's gone already.
It's already gone now.
Yeah, it won't be till September.
And typically, you can put a notice in there, but a lot of our customers too do direct deposit or direct payment.
They just have automatic and they don't need it.
What we could do is, we could probably create like a tiny URL for it, just have gatewayparksurvey.com. And instead of the link, like, you'll have the link, but the link would be like, you go to the Facebook page, and it'll show it. We could make it, create a tiny URL for it, which is, we could rename it whatever we want. So we could always just tell people, so if like, somebody comes up to Ed and goes, Ed, I didn't get that survey. And you go, okay, it's fine, just go to www.gatewayparkproposal.com.
Let's let our residents do what we're trying to do. I'm assuming we got a sign-in sheet, let's find out these people that were here, but who's, who's gonna spread the word any quicker than these people? They know how to do it.
And I can check and see how many of them filled out the survey the first time too, because they gave us names.
Is that a Facebook page, a government organization Facebook page?
It.
Is it in compliance with?
I think it's a group.
It's a, I think it's a business page.
Oh.
I'm not sure how it was set up.
Anyway, let's take, look at that.
Well, because, well. Okay, so you may wanna look into that, because I'm pretty sure it has to follow within the government requirements and criteria for the Facebook page. So it's a little bit different, and that gives it an option to send out a boost, which is an invitation for everybody that lives within the zip code. I can partner with you with that, because.
Yeah, I don't know about Facebook.
Yeah, because there are certain things that are different, and, yeah.
Why don't you follow with staff?
Yeah.
If I go on, I'm on Nextdoor, I respond to a lot of people and I write stuff.
Yep.
Can I put in a link on that?